Good late afternoon or early evening. I'm Mayor Esther Sanchez. Welcome to the City of Oceanside's City Council Meeting for June 16, 2021. We're going to have an advisory from the City Clerk's Office from Mr. Navarro, and then we're going to go ahead and get started on our agenda.
Okay. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak on an item, you must have registered to speak with the Clerk's Office prior to the 4 o'clock PM deadline. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please make sure you are registered under the name you are registered with, with the Clerk's Office. If you are in attendance and wish to speak on an item, please register to speak with one of our staff members in the lobby prior to when public comment is called for the item. If you have material to distribute to council, please hand it to me, and I will distribute it to the council. Please do not approach individual council members. I will distribute the materials for you. And with that, we could do the roll call.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, and if you would all please rise for the invocation.
All right.
We have with us tonight Father Ray from the St. Mary's Star of the Sea Church, which is right across the street, going to soon be having something like over 100-year celebration fairly soon, thinking in two or three years. So Father Ray, I understand that you are with us by phone.
Father Ray, you're on.
Thank you all for your patience. Let us now put ourselves in the Holy Presence of the Lord in the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and opportunity to serve your people of the City of Oceanside. We ask you to be with us in our city council meeting. Help us to act with love and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Send your Holy Spirit to be with us, strengthen our spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence of your creation deserves. And finally, renew us with the strength of your Holy Presence and the joy of helping to build our city worthy of your own being. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you and the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Father Ray.
And holy Spirit.
Thank you. Please remain standing and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And you may be, okay, you're all seated, great. So this is the fun part of the agenda. We do have a long agenda, but there is something that we really need to stop and pause about, and that is to recognize city employees for what they do for the city. They've worked, some of them, many years, long hours, and they have real dedication to the City of Oceanside. And we're going to have tonight public safety individuals recognized. We previously had other employees for the city, and tonight it's public safety. And we're going to begin with the Oceanside Police Department. And we're going to start with Officer Gary Alexis. Please come forward, Gary. And also the chief. And any family members to join us tonight?
No.
No, okay. Well, Gary, Police Officer Alexis. Being the officer, actually the sworn Officer of the Year and City Employee of the Year for Oceanside Police Department is something I know that means a lot to all of us, not only in your department and all the men and women that you serve with, but also with neighborhoods and businesses because of all the work that you do and how you really shine and make the police department shine for us. So I'm going to hand the mic over to Chief Armijo, who's going to tell us some wonderful stories about you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to recognize great employees in the police department. Gary has been a police officer with us for about 26 years now, and arguably, he is the hardest-working police officer that we have. If we had the technology and I could clone Gary and put one of him in every area of the police department, I would. I don't think that I've ever heard Gary complain about anything, and he's just the nicest person and very well-respected in our police department. Gary has a talent for building rapport and communicating with people that have done some terrible things. And a couple of examples is that a few months ago, a person assaulted one of our police officers, and we had the assistance of the Sheriff's Department, Carlsbad Police Department, and a lot of our own resources trying to track this individual down. Once this person was found, he would not surrender, and we tried some less lethal technologies on this person, nothing worked. Gary seized on an opportunity to communicate with this person, developed a rapport, and convinced them to surrender peacefully at that time. That's one example. On another occasion, Gary responded to a call at one of the local fitness centers, and an individual had armed themselves with a knife and was threatening the employees and patrons of the gym. Once again, Gary gets there, and he is able to de-escalate the situation, develop a rapport with this person, got the person to disarm themselves and surrender. Just the epitome of somebody being able to communicate with somebody in crisis and peacefully resolve a critical incident. Gary just happens to be a very outstanding person and an outstanding police officer, and we're very, very proud to have him be a part of our organization and to recognize him as our sworn Member of the Year. So thank you very much.
We're going to go ahead and pose for picture here. Thank you, Gary. Thank you very much for everything you do for all of us. Thank you. Well, Chief, stay here because we have another person from the police department. Grazziella Vinesi. Come on down. Do you have anybody else coming with you? So Grazziella is one of our dispatchers, and can you imagine how hard that is to do? And, you know, all the folks in dispatch, what you do to ensure the public safety of all of our citizens and being able to respond quickly to those phone calls and then to be able to dispatch the help that needs to get out there. You've been recognized by the chief. I'm sure you had a lot of competition. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the whole city council. I don't know if you all wanted to join me. I'm sorry, I should have asked. But bottom line is, thank you so much, and I've got some stories, I understand, from the chief.
I don't know that I'm good at telling stories, but, so Grazziella has been with us for about 16 years now as a dispatcher and professional assistant within our communications center. And one of the things that we've really been trying to focus on recently is hard work and respect amongst our staff. And Grazziella is like the epitome of both of those attributes that we're looking for. Again, another person just like Gary that I don't know that I've ever heard a complaint even being attributed to Grazziella. And an example of hard work, so the pandemic caused some shifts in workflow between the police department and the DA's office when it comes to discovery requests. So anytime that we make an arrest, any 911 recording needs to accompany the reports that we send to the DA's office. It used to be that we had two weeks to download these recordings, make copies of them, and send them over. When the pandemic hit, some of the workflow changes reduced that down to three days. So that burden, that responsibility rested on Grazziella's shoulders. And at times, we're talking 70-plus cases a week that she is doing this tremendous amount of work for. And not a complaint, she just continues to work hard and get the job done. And she is not only respected within the organization, but she treats other people with respect, which is something that we need very much so. So again, we're very happy and lucky and fortunate to have somebody like Grazziella part of the OPD family, and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the Oceanside Fire Department. Employee of the Year, and we've got two. Employee of the Year for the Oceanside Fire Department, Ron Owens. Will you please come down here? Yeah, he's bringing with, he's great with videos of the city and all. This guy can hypnotize kids, I guess also adults, but I've seen this, I have seen him interact with their kids, and it's phenomenal to watch you, Ron. But, you know, you're really here because you are the Employee of the Year for the Fire Department and for the Fire Department, which is second to none in our region. You all do such a wonderful, wonderful job. I know Chief Robinson couldn't be here tonight. He really wanted to be here, but we do have someone else that's going to speak about the great things that you do and that you have done and why you earned Employee of the Year.
Good evening. David Parsons, Division Chief with the Fire Department. Chief Robinson sends his regrets, but it's truly an honor and privilege to recognize Ron and our other Employee of the Year. I'm going to have to read from some prepared items because it's too much what these two folks do, but in Ron's case, he's well-known around the city. This smile that you see on this guy's face, I think everybody that's met him knows it because they see the smile on his face every day. It's how he shows up to work, and it's how he interacts with people. Often described as the guy with the bubbling personality, Ron serves in the community risk reduction, which is my division, privileged to have him working for me in the Fire Department. He has many talents beyond his professional capabilities. Don't look him in the eye, as we've already alluded to, because you may be walking around doing who-knows-what.
Hypnotizing.
Yes. Nominated as the sworn Employee of the Year for the Fire Department was not for his entertainment ability, but rather for what he's holding here, and it's for the drone program that he has really spearheaded and brought to a really high level of professionalism. It's been great. He's a licensed pilot for the drone program. His passion for this emergency, emerging technology allowed him to create the program, and he actually used his own drone, his own, spent his own money to make this product, to get this program off the ground. And with some benefits that the city provided and work through the Fire Department, we've now provided him with some professional equipment, and it's doing some amazing things for us. Yeah, it was actually the help of Measure X funding, by the way, to get these drones, so that's really good news there. We have three drones, two are at the lifeguard division, one with Ron. He actually responded and attempted to use it today on a fire. And Ron has trained several OFD personnel and prepared them to pass the pilot test. He's always finding new ways to use this technology. He's earned his wings and has earned this recognition, and he will be recognized as an Oceanside hero by the Chamber of Commerce later this month as well. Ron, congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, why not? Hi, thank you.
And why is a drone so important to public safety?
Well, the reason why I started this drone program is because of the technologies that are coming around, you know? And every young child or young adult that I see, I always tell them that this is their future, especially when it comes to fire and life safety. The first time I used this drone was on a fire where it has infrared capabilities on the drone, where I could have it up in the air, focus on the facility or building, whatever it is, on fire, pass it off to the fire guys where they could actually see where the fire is, the hotspots, where they're not wasting water putting out fire in other areas. Now with the lifeguards, they're going to be using them for beach patrol, which makes it a lot simpler for them to drive up and down the beach, fly up and down the beach vice, driving up and down the beach. They could check for sharks, for any kind of riptides, rip currents. It's a lifesaver. This is a lifesaver, and if we save one life with this drone, the whole program will be worth the money that the city, Dave, Pete Lawrence also, that invested in this technology. And I congratulate you guys for allowing me to fulfill my dream. I tell them that I'm the Tuskegee Airmen of the drone program, you know? So a lot of people don't even know that. They're like, Tuskegee, you know? But anyways, thank you guys for having me come here, and thank you for nominating me and Pete. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person. Lynn Seebloom, RN EMT. Lynn, please come down. Lynn, you do some wonderful things for the City of Oceanside. You were also part of the designated person during COVID, is that right? And, I mean, you've done so many things for us during a very, very critical time, and I know we have some other stories to say about you, but thank you so much. You have really helped ensure the lives of the citizens of Oceanside. Thank you so much.
Yes, so again, this is another privilege, another great employee. Lynn serves in many roles in the Fire Department. She manages the Emergency Medical Services Division, and let me tell you, she's more than 110% busy on a regular basis. And when COVID came on, she did her own job on top of her responsibilities that I'm going to describe here in a moment. Starting with the beginning, she plays a crucial role in the hiring and ongoing education of our paramedics and emergency medical technicians. She serves as a liaison to the County Emergency Medical Services Authority and performs quality assurance and quality improvement for the department and much more than that. Early in 2020, when it became clear that COVID-19 was going to have a serious impact on the city, Lynn took the critical role of being the city's designated infectious control officer. And in this role, she became responsible for screening every employee who became ill, had an actual or potential exposure, or just had a concern about being infected. And so just yesterday, we hit 616 people that she's been screening and monitoring during the pandemic that she took care of and helped manage and keep safe, which in turn keeps the city safe and employees safe. When this happened, there were no more days off. Her phone became, started ringing off the hook, and to every person in this city, not just employees, were starting to reach out to Lynn. Again, while maintaining her normal workload, she monitored county and state conference calls, and when the vaccines arrived, she became the point of distribution coordinator for Operation Collaboration. That's the one where everybody started to get their vaccines initially, and so she was a pod coordinator, that's a term for it, for North County, one of the original people. And by the way, this is one of the most successful vaccination distribution models of this entire pandemic, as seen by why, you know, San Diego has led the way in the state, and we have pretty much hit herd immunity as of right now. It's really good news. Lynn is most deserving, of course, of this recognition as the administrative employee of the year. She will also be honored by the Chamber of Commerce as a hero of Oceanside later this month. Lynn, congratulations.
Thank you for the recognition, and I appreciate the honor. And most of all, I just really want to say, everybody in the city, all employees, have really taken actions to really help keep our city, our public, and our fellow employees safe. And I also do want to also remember, we did lose an employee to COVID this year, and that was a sad moment for all of us, but again, together, everybody's working hard to try to keep us safe as employees as well as the public. And so I couldn't go without saying this in this role that I have, is if you're not already vaccinated, I highly encourage you to get vaccinated. Whether you believe in vaccines or not, the science does say that the vaccines that we have available keep us safe, and especially right now, there is a new strain, the variant, Delta variant, is shown to be more infectious and can make you sicker. And so now that we're all opening up and we're, you know, not wearing masks, hopefully those that are not vaccinated really do the right thing and wear the masks in public to help really keep themselves and other non-vaccinated people safe. And for those that, you know, haven't been vaccinated, just please do consider it again because it will help you to be able to be free in public and feel safe about that and then also be contributing to herd immunity and our safe community. Thanks again for the honor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lynn. Hold on, wait. Thank you. Thank you, my friend. Okay, our next item is a proclamation in honor of Parks Make Life Better. Mark, can you please come down here? He's our director for Parks and Rec for the City of Oceanside, as well as, I know we have some folks who work for the Parks and Rec Department as well as members of O-Park, which is the foundation. Come on down.
I think the one thing, Genevieve, the one thing that is so critical for us in Oceanside, spread this way so we can, there we go, are parks and recreation and being able to give access to as many people as possible. This really truly is a critical resource that the City of Oceanside offers. And I do have the proclamation, which is basically a statewide campaign, and we take this to heart. Whereas Parks and Recreation promote physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity. And whereas Parks and Recreation support the economic vitality of communities by providing frontline jobs, childcare for the essential workforce, and promoting community revitalization. And whereas Parks and Rec create memorable experiences through engaging virtual and physically distance programs, dynamic online events, and new learning opportunities designed to keep families active while stay-at-home orders during the time, especially during this COVID time. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all peoples have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Rec support human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Rec strengthen community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, landscape. And whereas Parks and Rec facilitate community problem and issue resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and facilitating conversations and services in order that our communities may heal both physically and emotionally. And whereas Parks and Rec sustain and stewards on natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas Parks and Rec support safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. And whereas the California Park and Recreation Society, excuse me, has released a statewide public awareness campaign, Parks Make Life Better, to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs, and services. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2021 as Parks Make Life Better in the City of Oceanside, and urge all citizens to celebrate by visiting one of Oceanside's many parks and/or by participating in their choice of activities offered by the Oceanside Parks and Recreation Division. Thank you to the Parks and Rec Department, to the City of Oceanside, to our volunteers for our, you know, foundation that really truly makes us be able to enjoy so many things. And I know that they are committed to trying to do as much as possible, including more opportunities, so that everyone can have that access to Parks and Recreation Department of services. Thank you. And I'm going to send, give this to you, Genevieve, as a representative of O-Park, is that right? Okay, thank you.
Did you want to speak?
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
Tell us what we can do this summer for Parks and Rec. We're all anxious now that, you know, everything's open, our opportunity here, including the July 3 fireworks and on.
Yes, well, I'll try and be brief, but we have many things going on. Thank you, Mayor, for this proclamation. I would like to thank Genevieve and also all the Friends of Oceanside Parks and Recreation for everything they do to support our programs. And my team here, we have many members of the aquatic staff here who have been very busy. Our summer programming's just started this week, surf camps, swim lessons are full, but also I think parks over this past year have served such an important role in everybody's lives, and so I would like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the staff who support everything that we do, our Public Works Department, who make the parks beautiful and enjoyable for the residents and the guests to come here in Oceanside and enjoy them. So encourage you to get out and enjoy them. Like the mayor said, fireworks are back. In just a few short weeks, we will have our 133rd birthday for the City of Oceanside with fireworks, and we are working feverishly to put together a great show and one that we'll build on going forward. So we encourage everyone to tell their friends, come out and enjoy what has been traditionally a wonderful event, but it doesn't just stop there. We have programs going throughout the summer, so we encourage you to look at the recreation guide that we have going on, and more and more programs will be offered as we now can provide them in a much more efficient and free fashion. So thank you so much for everything that everyone does to support Oceanside Parks and Recreation. We have many partners, way too many to comment on, but the Friends of Oceanside Parks and Recreation is a huge ally and a partner for us, and we're grateful that they could be here to accept this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Genevieve. So next, we have our closed session report. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. The council met earlier this afternoon to discuss Item 1 on the agenda, Conference of Labor Negotiator involving a potential side agreement with the Oceanside Police Officers Association. Item 2 was a conference with real property negotiator involving city-owned land located at 1900 Harbor Drive North. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and Aloha Partners. Under negotiations are the price and terms for the lease of the property. The city also met on Item 3, Conference with Legal Counsel on Existing Litigation in the Matter of the NRF Project Owner LLC versus City of Oceanside at All, Case Number 2020-00025295. There is no action at this time under the Brown Act to report on Items 1 through 3.
Thank you. Next are consent calendar items. Those are Items 5 through 31. Are there any requests to pull?
Yes, we received the request from the public to pull Items 9, 15, 22, and 31.
Okay, any requests from the dais, from the council members? No? I'm sorry? Okay, so is there motion to approve balance? Okay, so is there a motion to approve balance?
I just have a really quick clarifying question on 18 and 25.
Okay, he promises to be quick. 18 and 25. Okay, there is a motion to approve the balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, Item number 9?
Item number 9, we received a request to speak from Diane Nygaard.
Thank you. This is approval of Amendment 1 to the professional services agreement with Diet and Batia in the amount of $559,600 for a total revised contract price of $3.2 million for consultant services in support of the second phase of the city's general plan update. Approval to appropriate $59,600 from the Parks Fees Fund, 598, to the Trails Master Plan Budget and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment. Let's hear from Ms. Nygaard.
Ms. Nygaard, you are on.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I certainly support the overall agenda item, but there was one sentence in the staff report that was very concerning. Says that we're going to update the open space and conservation element instead of doing our conservation sub-area plan, a plan that we've been working on for over 20 years. Whether or not our city adopts a sub-area plan is really a major policy decision that has not been brought before this council. And staff had told me that although that's what it says in the staff report, that was really not their intent. And I was just hoping to get some public clarification of that at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Borrego, if you could confirm, I believe that our discussions at this time regarding a sub-area plan, can you confirm those discussions and that this is not a thumbs down?
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'd be happy to answer that question and concern. Yes, you are correct, Mayor. In the past, staff has communicated to council a recommendation that rather than adopting the sub-area plan as an option, instead that we would include the key policies within the pending conservation element that's part of the general plan update program. However, in recent months, we've actually been revisiting that issue based on some recent conversations with the wildlife agencies. And based on those conversations, they may be addressing some of the concerns that staff initially had regarding the potential costs and city obligations associated with adopting the sub-area plan. So that is certainly something that's still under discussion. You know, I can share that we will not be adopting the sub-area plan as part of the general plan update itself because that's not within the scope of work. However, we are certainly willing to consider that as a follow-up item and even potentially include that as a goal within the conservation element to commit to doing that subsequent review and potentially adopt the sub-area plan. Of course, this would all be subject to City Council's direction to go in that direction, but certainly we're reevaluating that initial recommendation that we made and subject to council's concurrence, maybe in a position down the road of actually recommending adoption of the sub-area plan.
Right, and even possibly sooner than later.
Yeah, and this, yes, absolutely. And it is actually a priority, has been communicated to those that have been involved in those discussions.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Borrego. What is the timeline associated with actually completing this whole effort?
As of right now, we're looking to bring the completed plan back to the City Council for adoption in the latter part of 2022. Initially, when we brought the contract to the City Council originally with Diet and Batia, we were projecting that we would be done in mid-2022. However, there was a significant issue that came up having to do with Sand Dag's adoption of what's called the Series 14 Traffic Model, which is pending right now. And that is the model that needs to be run as part of our traffic analysis. And so, it does not make sense to run our traffic analysis based on what's called Series 13, which is a current model, which would quickly essentially become defunct at the point in time that Series 14 is adopted. And I know I'm getting kind of technical here, but anyway, so that delay in waiting for that new traffic model to rerun will result in a delay which pushes back about five months in the process. So rather than mid-2022, we're probably looking at the latter part of 2022. We don't expect any other delays beyond that at this point.
Thank you. Move approval, staff recommendation.
Second, no other comments, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 15 is approval of Amendment 9 to the professional services agreement with Civic Solutions in the amount of $60,000 for a total revised contract price of $718,000 for contract planning services through June 30, 2022 and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment.
Unfortunately, we are having issues with the video portion of the Zoom call, but we could still hear audio. So if you're on the Zoom call, please note that you are still being heard down on our end. We just can't see you and broadcast you on the council chambers end.
So this is Dan Matlock?
This is Dan Matlock.
Okay.
So Mr. Matlock, whenever you're ready. Mr. Matlock, are you here? You're not in the Zoom call. Mr. Matlock does not appear to be here or on the Zoom. So that would conclude the public comment, I guess.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, next is, actually, 18 is in numeric.
Deanna, this item is referencing Libby Lake and youth services and programs. It's been a successful program for years. I know over COVID, they helped out a lot of families. They moved to more of a virtual program. But in reviewing their contract, they're looking at helping up to 60 youth and involving parents. And the goal behind this is violence prevention, gang prevention. The funding account says there's about $76,000 or so in the account. We're awarding them $72,000. This is a vital program for our city and for this area. Is there any way we can, how do we come up with that number, right? Is there more of a need? If we gave them more money, can we help 120 youth? Like, what's the relationship and dynamic there? If you could let me know.
So, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor and councilmembers, the details of this contract are handled by our Neighborhood Services Department. And I'm hoping Megan might be able to address that question. Normally Maria Yanez would be here, but shout of death in the family, she can't be here tonight, but hopefully Megan can answer that question for you.
And again, this is approval of a professional service agreement with Vista Community Clinic in the amount of $72,000 for the Project Reach Program at the Libby Lake Community Center, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Ms. Crooks?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez and Council, Megan Crooks with Neighborhood Services. We, if council wanted to fund more, we funded the requested amount, so we budget accordingly and then whatever they request.
So this is what they asked for?
This is what they asked for. However, I'm sure if they had additional funding, that we maybe could extend the number served.
Absolutely. As a part of this item, I would just like you to ask them if there is more funding they need. I know the money we got from the feds allows for this type of programming, including mental health for our youth, those sort of things. Have them come back to us. This is such a huge program for our city, especially this area. So I move approval of this item.
Thank you. And there's a second. And I just want to say that we have not yet started to talk about the recovery funds. And this is in your district, Councilmember Rodriguez. We do have other similarly situated neighborhoods, so we will be looking at that. In fact, some of the funds are specifically targeting the CDBG designated areas. So Ms. Larson, do you have anything else to add?
Mayor, I would just echo that, that we certainly will keep that in mind as we develop our American Rescue Act plan. We certainly want to see maximum benefit to our neighborhoods and we will evaluate existing programs that maybe could be expanded, as well as other opportunities.
And I do support your comments, by the way. So there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, next is, I believe, 22, yes, 22, which is approval of a professional service agreement with Interfaith Community Services in the amount of $254,016 to provide 12 bridge housing beds for homeless individuals needing temporary shelter and housing navigation assistance to permanent housing and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. And this is, this is a request by the, a member of the public.
Correct. We do have one member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, Nick Ritchie, and he is joining us via Zoom. And Mr. Ritchie, whenever you're ready, you could start.
Thank you, Zeb. Mayor and City Council, for 30 years, I was in secondary education. 20 of those years, I was the counselor administrator of a program called Partnership Academy, a school within a school focusing on high-risk students and their success. A key component to our program and vital to our funding was accountability. Results. To receive our funding, our students had to demonstrate improved attendance and grades. If the student was not doing this, we did all we could to assist. If not working out, the student was put on probation first semester. And if not working out second semester, they were exited from the program. We always had a waiting list. Knowing our funding was based on our students' success highly motivated us as a teacher team for success for our students. No success, no money. And unfortunately, this model has not been followed by, once again, our education system in the state of California. It still boggles my mind where students could sit in classrooms, get six Fs and still be fully funded from the Department of Education. I would venture to say that should the above system be employed to most nonprofits, quote, "serving the homeless," unquote, they'd be receiving a meager payment. Do they even have a definition of success? Surely it can't just be the number of clients serviced found permanent housing? How long have they been in permanent housing? Years, months? What percent are successful in using this bridge housing to transition to permanent housing? Quote, "Serve up to 48 individuals annually, average stay 90 days." Is that it? Is that success? Where is the accountability? Where's, once again, the evaluation? To say anchored in reality, please evaluate this program at year's end, using a clearly defined goal of wellness and wholeness. What percent of the 48 individuals will constitute success? We all want our neighbors well and whole. We don't want to harm them instead of help them. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment on this item.
Thank you. Okay, I am, okay, go ahead. Councilmember Rodriguez?
If you don't mind, I can actually include Item 25 with this because it's Interfaith, it's another contract with Interfaith.
25 is, okay, so right now, we're on 22.
But I pulled 25, so we could just kill two birds with one stone, if you're okay with that.
Mr. Mullin?
It's fine, it's subject to your discretion, Mayor.
Okay, all right.
Last council meeting, we just approved.
And if I could, just before you start, so Item number 25 is acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $194,830 from the San Diego Regional Task Force on the homeless for the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. Approval to appropriate the funds for the Neighborhood Services Department. Approval of a professional services agreement with Interfaith Community Services in the amount of $175,195 for administration of the program and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement and grant documents upon receipt of all supporting documents. Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah. Interfaith is coming across the dais and on our agendas quite often. And, you know, I appreciate their organization. They are, you know, heavily involved in several jurisdictions and they've partnered with the city for many years. But one pattern I consistently see is the, the Interfaith program, from my experience, from my research and in my opinion, is appropriate for the housing-first model, which is tied to funding, which is tied to individuals that are never going to function back into society. That's about 20% of the homeless population. And once we get to Item 34, I'll get into that a little deeper. But there's 80% of the homeless population that, whatever the underlying root issue, they have the capacity with limited government intervention and nonprofit support and what we call wraparound services to move on a pathway to being fully self-sufficient. Work, getting back with their family, living the best life they can be, not on government dependency. Housing first, which is tied to funding and policies of no drug testing, okay? You don't have to work, free housing and no accountability on an unending pathway of government subsidy. So if we take 100% of the homeless population and we try to squeeze them through what was meant for the physically disabled, the permanently mentally ill, we're going to run out of space, we're going to run out of resources and we're going to be in the exact position hundreds of jurisdictions up and down our state fall in today. It's a failed model and it needs to stop. And I'm hopeful in Oceanside, we can set the par on moving forward on what works. Now, like I said, Interfaith is appropriate for the housing first, those individuals that will never be able to make it on their own ever again. Get them into a hotel voucher, we get them into a bridge housing, we find, you know, affordable housing, we get them into it. But nothing's being done. No numbers are being provided to show the success of integrating individuals that were homeless back into society, back on their own. Because what ends up happening is when Interfaith or a nonprofit gets them behind an expensive door, they're forgotten about and we don't hear about them anymore. But you know what ends up happening is they go right back through the cycle of chaos, right back on our streets. And so there's not enough accountability. Meanwhile, billions of taxpayer dollars are being wasted and we see contracts like this come through with not enough questions, saying, "Prove to me that the last million dollars we gave you over the last 24 months got individuals off the street and they're living their best life. Prove it." It's not happening and it needs to start happening because your tax dollars are worth more than this. These individuals' lives are worth more than this and enough's enough. We're looking at Item 18, or not 18, I'm sorry, Item 22, Item 25. And these are two more contracts, half a million dollars. We just approved another quarter million dollars last week. And there's another item for Interfaith on here for, you know, another million dollars for the first year and a bunch of other stuff on this same model. So that concerns me. We, we, we need to really get on board and stop piecemealing this stuff in and then we're stuck on a model that has failed over and over again. And so I would like to, you know, I don't know if I can get supportive, but I would like to hold off on Item 22 and 25 until we deal with Item 34 because we're just going to keep approving contracts and money on a model that's failed when we really need to consolidate and focus. Thank you.
All right, what I want to say is this, and I don't know, Deanna, if you want to, if you want to have someone from the Housing Department come forward again, but pretty much, with all due respect to Councilmember Rodriguez, I disagree with just about everything that was said. I think part of what you're talking about is housing first and the funds that are coming through, and the only funding that is coming through is all housing first. I've been on the task force for the county on homelessness, also for the North County cities. I have, I have worked with, in this case, Interfaith, as well as other nonprofit homeless organizations. And I believe that especially Interfaith has high accountability, is one of the, probably the highest in class in terms of maintaining data and actually getting people through a system that starts with phase, step one, which is through a homeless shelter, through a process of getting that person, you know, whatever services they need, be it, and this is wraparound services. This is not, you know, getting someone off the streets and that's it. It is getting people to get off drugs by getting referrals to drug treatment programs. It's getting jobs. It's making them finally get back into it's getting jobs, it's making them finally get back into society. And I do see Mr. Angel here, who may want to... Will you come forward and talk about your, some of your data? Because I don't want the... I know that there are different ways of approaching homelessness, but I have to say, after what I have seen, I think that Interfaith, and there are other nonprofits, Mental Health Services, they really are doing, knowing that they have to report back. Federal government, you cannot get federal or state money unless you are able to show results. So even the City of Oceanside could be denied funds if we do not show results. Mr. Angel?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Council. Interfaith Community Services does operate Housing First programs. And by the way, my name is Greg Angel. I'm the CEO of Interfaith Community Services. However, we operate the full spectrum of homeless services, and we provide programs that require sobriety upon entry. We operate a detox, a residential treatment program, and an outpatient treatment program, all of which include regular drug testing as one example. So I'm afraid it's a misunderstanding to label all of our programs under one term or to think of our programs as only serving 20% of people experiencing homelessness. We serve all people. We are many faith communities coming together. We like to say we serve all of God's children. And we meet people where they're at, and we connect them to the resources that are best suited for their situation. This morning, I met with local philanthropists from the Lucky Duck Foundation, and they requested a grant proposal to purchase a vehicle so that we can move individuals who are in shelters to employment, to connect with local hospitality businesses, in particular restaurants and hotels. Next week, we will be meeting with the Oceanside Chamber, specifically the hospitality subset of the Chamber, to further make those connections. So we're making employment connections on an ongoing basis. Anyone who is able to work, our job is to help them get to where they need to be, and working, if they're able to, is always part of that solution. I would be very happy and honored to return with a full set of data addressing any concerns that you have on this program or any other.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. I have a... I'm going to make a motion to approve both items number 22 and 25. Is there a second? Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Can you step up to the mic, please, sir? I requested at the last council meeting to understand the percentage of private funding that you receive and the percentage of government funding. You didn't have an answer then. City staff followed up with you, and you provided a college study by graduating college students that was done a couple of years ago, did not cover the questions I had about where the funding source comes, what are you dependent on when you do what you do? And you couldn't answer me. You wanted to set up an in-person meeting because you didn't have the answer, because that answer is, is your primary funding is government. So you're an extension of government, an extension of bureaucracy, and that's not going to fix the problem.
You're correct, Councilmember. I offered to meet with you in person and understand your concerns and address them fully. I'm very capable of explaining all of the funding of Interfaith Community Services. Your question was about a broader alliance of more than 75 nonprofit organizations, of which I'm not able to speak to at the same level of specificity. However, if you'd like to have a conversation now or at any time, be very happy to share all of the information, and you are correct. Interfaith Community Services has a budget that has more funding from government grants and contracts than we do from other sources. However, we are powered by philanthropy, by private donor investment. This year, we are only able to deliver our programs and services, helping more than 20,000 of our local neighbors in need here in Oceanside and North County through contributions of actually more than $5 million in private donations. This year, for the sixth year in a row, we've received the highest rating from Charity Navigator, a third-party auditing service of the financial stewardship that we demonstrate. So just a few things. I don't want to take more time. It's a very long meeting that we have tonight, that you have tonight, but I am here to address and support any concerns that you have, Councilmember.
Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, this is directed toward the city manager. For the last several weeks, we've been getting weekly updates on the city's programs as far as motel vouchers, people in, people out, success rates, and everything else. Is there a way to get something similar for these two contracts? That has specific data of people in, people out, people served, and what happened to them every step of the way?
Councilmember Weiss, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Yes, I actually had already jotted down a note to make sure that we develop a comprehensive system for performance reporting so that we can provide that data, and I would like to publish it on our website as well, so that we can provide those metrics for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, I had a question regarding the Housing First. You said your other programs do require drug testing, and is positive drug test exclusionary? Will people be exited from any programs based on positive drug testing?
The program in question, the Bridge Housing Program we operate in Oceanside, is a low-barrier program. There is no drug testing. All of our programs have rules and requirements of the participants. So if somebody, for example, in the Bridge Housing Program here in Oceanside gets into a fight or causes problems with their neighbors, they would receive the same repercussions that I would say any of us would receive, should we do those things. Likelihood of exit from the program and repercussions for their behaviors. Drug use or alcohol use on its own, just as it isn't for anyone in this room, cause for losing your housing or losing your job is not a factor in this program. It is behavioral-based. And when I described our other programs, I was really being specific to our drug and alcohol treatment programs.
Okay, so with this program, if somebody were to be drinking and using when they enter the program, that's not a factor? They can continue to drink and use while they're in this program?
Individuals are not allowed to drink or use on-site. They're not allowed to have any alcohol or drugs on-site. That is cause for exit. If somebody is drinking or using, we will work with them to try to get them into treatment and to use a harm reduction model to minimize the negative impact of their substance use. And if their behaviors are not compliant with the rules of the program, then they will be exited.
Okay, I think that answers my question. So they could, in fact, continue to drink and use while in the program as long as they're not getting in fights and disrupting other clients?
And they're meeting the goals of their individual case management plan. So every client in this program, and most of the programs we operate, has specific goals. This is a bridge housing program. Every client has the goal of securing housing of their own. They need to be making progress towards those goals. If they are not, we will use a series of tools at our disposal, motivational interviewing, connections to family, friends, looking at other resources, addressing appropriate level of care, and try to move people into the appropriate resource, which may not be this program. But if they're not making progress towards those goals, if they're just hanging out and drinking and using, then yes, they will be exited.
Okay, and is there a specific timeline for this?
We seek to move individuals into permanent housing in this program within 90 days.
Okay, so 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other lights, please vote.
This is just for item number 22 or item 25?
25, my apologies.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Motion approved, 4-1. Rodriguez, no?
Okay, item number 31, which is the last one that was requested to be pulled, is approval of the Updating Planning Commission work plan for fiscal years 2021, 2022, and for 2022 to 2023. And that was somebody from the public?
Yes, we have one member of the public that wishes to speak on this, Nick Ritchie. Nick, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Zeb. Mayor, Council? In this particular item is an item that talks about the local coastal plan. I think this is critical to not only the survival of our city, but its success. I urge the City Council to either keep the local coastal plan as we now have, or make amendments to it that will only benefit the City of Oceanside. I want you to understand, there is no mandate to revise this plan. We don't have to revise it completely. Of course, the Coastal Commission would like us to do that. The current older LCP has provisions in it that give the city the flexibility to protect our beaches, the public and private property, and beach access. These provisions would be in jeopardy with a revision. The Coastal Commission would lobby to eliminate them, reducing our sovereignty and increasing their semi-legislative overreach. We must marshal all our resources to restore and protect our beaches. Please do all you can to preserve the sovereignty of Oceanside from state overreach. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the Planning Commission work plan for 2021, 2022 to 2022, 2023. Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. IT has requested a five-minute break, so we're going to go ahead and do that. We'll be back at nine minutes after the hour. Thank you.
So we are on air right now.
You're on?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and get started with our public hearing items, which are certainties. Yeah? First item is item 35, which is a document in our resolution accepting the City of Oceanside 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Conservation Master Plan. And request disclosures for the councilmembers and continued contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
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 Thank you, Mr. Barrow. Do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the Council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and begin testimony with Sarah Davis of National...
I am.
Okay, well, fantastic.
We can go for it, okay.
We're ready for you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, today I will be presenting on the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. Staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution accepting the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Conservation Master Plan. Every five years, each California water purveyor is required to adopt and submit an urban water management plan to the Department of Water Resources in order to comply with state regulations. It also serves as a planning and resource document for the city that assists with long-term water supply and demand planning for our city's service area. The Urban Water Management Plan includes an analysis of the city's water use, demand and supply, an evaluation of the city's compliance with per-capita water use targets, demand management measures, and a water shortage contingency plan. As part of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan update, staff also updated the Water Conservation Master Plan. The Water Conservation Master Plan serves as a voluntary attachment to the Urban Water Management Plan and provides a more comprehensive look at water efficiency measures, along with detailed information about the city's water conservation programming. The draft Urban Water Management Plan was available for public comment from April 30th to May 30th, and the city did not receive any public comments on those items. There is a table in your slidebook that shows the demand for water use projections with and without water conservation measures. The baseline demand is the average year demands without any conservation measures incorporated and is based on an average and forecast of population, housing, and employment. We then utilize passive conservation measures, which include updates to the plumbing fixtures and appliances. This is set by state and federal water efficiency standards. Moving forward, as more appliances are replaced, we will see an increase in water conservation, and that is that second line with demand passive conservation. The bottom row shows the demand with both passive and active conservation. Active conservation are programs that are implemented by the city or homeowner that result in a reduction in potable water demand. The draft Water Conservation Master Plan sets regulations or sets programs that will meet these state regulations and include things like advanced metering, recycled water, and enhanced programming for commercial and residential customers. We also took a look at the water supply for the city. The City of Oceanside receives about 90% of our water supply from the San Diego County Water Authority. Oceanside continues to increase our local water supply reliability through local programs like Pure Water Oceanside and enhancing our recycled water. Through the development of these programs, we will be able to increase our local supply to 60% by 2030. We also took a look at historical and projected water use for potable and recycled water. In 2009, the State of California passed Water Conservation Act, also known as SB 7-7, which required California water suppliers to reduce their per-capita water use by 20% by 2020. The city was required to reduce our gallons per capita per day from 171 to 137. Oceanside's actual potable water use in 2020 was 116 gallons per capita per day. This is a result of the previously implemented Water Conservation Master Plans, which set the framework for water efficiency standards and actions, including landscape makeovers, rebates, and active education and outreach with our community. The city also... Or the city has already exceeded our standards for SB 7-7. However, there has been more stringent water use requirements as passed by the legislation in 2018. Those requirements are currently in the rulemaking process. As part of our Water Conservation Master Plan, the city set standards and programs that we expect to meet these new regulations, one of those including expanding our recycled water system. By doing so, we are able to reduce our gallons per capita per day to 93 by 2035. As part of the Urban Water Management Plan, there is also a Water Shortage Contingency Plan in Section 8, which outlines what the city will do to address future potential water shortages and includes an annual water supply and assessment. The annual assessment is a new requirement of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and is required to be submitted every year moving forward by July 1st. The annual assessment will evaluate the city's current water supply, as well as one additional dry year, to ensure that the city is able to meet the water supply needs. This is what is outlined in the Chapter 37 Code of the City's Municipal Ordinance. The city also established demand management measures, which ascribes what we have done for the past five years and what we will do moving forward. Those includes water waste prevention ordinances, reducing water loss through the implementation of advanced metering and management of our distribution system, increased education to the public, including our online WaterSmart customer portal, and establishing additional rebates and customer incentives. The draft Urban Water Management Plan was open for public comment from May 30th or April 30th to May 30th. We did not receive any. With the acceptance of the ordinance today, we will be submitting the Urban Water Management Plan to DWR by June 30th. And in conclusion, staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution accepting the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Conservation Master Plan, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. This is a public hearing. This is a time to hear from the public. If you wish to speak, you did not have to sign up. You can come over to the podium. You would have up to three minutes to speak on this item. I see no one rising. Do we have any public requests to speak by Zoom?
We have no public that wishes to speak by Zoom or were registered to speak on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the hearing. And Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval.
There's a motion to adopt, a second? Okay, a motion and a second, please vote.
I'm there.
Yes. Yes. Oh. So...
Are the voting?
Let's just raise hands.
Okay, I can do a roll call vote or...
Raise your hands if you are in support. And let the record reflect that it's five, all five councilmembers are voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirty-six is introduction of an ordinance amending Articles Four, Eleven, Thirteen, Sixteen, and Thirty of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance, that's ZA twenty-one dash zero 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 three, to allow emergency shelters by right on certain city-owned properties located in the commercial, industrial, and public semi-public zones, and to allow City of Oceanside government offices as a permitted use in the public semi-public zone. I'm going to open this public hearing and request disclosure from councilmembers and constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff?
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 Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do you have any correspondence and our petitions to present?
There are no correspondence.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin testimony with Shannon Vitale, Associate Planner for Planning Department.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name is Shannon Vitale. I'm an Associate Planner with the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item Thirty-six, a series of zoning text amendments related to emergency shelters and government offices. Staff is recommending the City Council introduce an ordinance to amend Articles Four, Eleven, Thirteen, Sixteen, and Thirty of the city's zoning ordinance to allow emergency shelters by right on certain city-owned properties and to allow city government offices by right in the public semi-public zone. An emergency shelter is defined as housing with minimal supportive services for homeless individuals that is limited to occupancy of six months or less. Currently, emergency shelters are allowed in certain zoning districts with a conditional use permit and are allowed in the limited industrial zone as a permitted use if they meet certain locational requirements. State housing law speaks to local government regulations regarding emergency shelters. Senate Bill Two requires local governments to establish a zoning district where emergency shelters are permitted by right without any separation requirements. In 2013, the city identified the limited industrial district as the appropriate zoning district to allow these facilities by right. However, the city's current ordinance does not comply with state law because it includes separation requirements. Assembly Bill One Thirty-nine amended the parking requirements for these facilities. The current zoning ordinance must be revised to reflect current parking standards established in AB One Thirty-nine. The draft housing element identified action items that are necessary to comply with state law. The action items listed in the housing element include revisions to the city's zoning ordinance to comply with SB Two and AB One Thirty-nine. In addition to the proposed amendments required by state housing law, staff received direction to explore opportunities for reducing barriers and streamlining the review process for these facilities located on city-owned properties, as well as city government offices that are located in the public semi-public zone. The proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance will allow emergency shelters as a permitted use on certain city-owned properties, modify the development and operational standards for emergency shelters to comply with state housing law, and allow City of Oceanside government offices by right in the public semi-public zone. By right means that the project would not be subject to discretionary review, including the requirement for a conditional use permit and/or a development plan. All projects would still be subject to applicable development standards and environmental review pursuant to CEQA. Offices associated with other government agencies would still be required to obtain a conditional use permit. The proposed text amendments are only applicable outside the coastal zone in downtown. The proposed revisions will expand the by-right provision to apply to emergency shelters located on city-owned property. There is no by-right provision for properties located in a residential zone. In order to qualify for the by-right provision, the shelter must be located at least 300 feet from a residential district or a sensitive use, which includes childcare facilities, churches, parks, playgrounds, and schools. If the facility does not meet those 300 feet separation requirements, it would be required to apply for a CUP. In accordance with state law, staff proposes amending the development standards for emergency shelters to align with the state guidelines. Specifically, the following revisions are proposed. No facility would be required to be sighted more than 300 feet from another facility. Facilities located in the limited industrial zone would not be subject to minimum separation requirements from residentially zoned property. The CUP requirement for certain limited industrial zone properties would be eliminated, and parking standards would be based on stacking level instead of bed count. The proposed zone amendments would modify the development and operational standards to incorporate state guidelines, thus bringing the city's zoning ordinance into compliance with state housing law. By expanding the by-right provision to apply to emergency shelters located on certain city-owned property, the city is creating more flexibility and opportunities for shelters and streamlining the process for the development of these facilities to assist with the ongoing homeless challenges faced by the city. Additionally, by allowing city government offices located in the public semi-public zoning district, the review of these facilities would be streamlined. Although these projects are proposed to be exempt from discretionary review, they are still subject to CEQA review and would be required to apply for a building permit and comply with all development standards. There would also be opportunities for public review, as any proposed facility located on city-owned property would require actions by City Council, including real estate transactions, approving design and construction contracts, and selecting the facility operators. Additionally, as a property owner, the city retains the authority to mitigate any impacts of these facilities and can control or terminate operations if necessary. The proposed amendments conform to the city's general plan in that they implement the draft housing element, action items related to emergency shelters, and facilitate and streamline the construction of these facilities. The proposed amendments were brought forward to the Housing Commission at their May 25th meeting. The Commissioners did not have any comments or questions related to the text amendments. Staff then brought the zone amendments to the Planning Commission at their June 7th meeting, in which the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. In conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council introduce an ordinance amending Articles Four, Eleven, Thirteen, Sixteen, and Thirty of the zoning ordinance to allow emergency shelters by right on city-owned property located in the commercial, industrial, and public semi-public zone, and allow city government offices by right in the public semi-public zone. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. This is a public hearing. This is a time to hear from the public. If you wish to speak on this item, please approach one of the two podiums. You would have up to three minutes to speak. You do not have to have previously signed up to speak. I see no one rising. I understand that there are no requests by Zoom. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Navarro? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the hearing and see if we have a motion. I'm going to move that we introduce the ordinance. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Mullen, do you wish to...
I'll go ahead and title the ordinance. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, amending Oceanside Zoning Ordinance, Articles Four, Eleven, Thirteen, Sixteen, and Thirty of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance regarding emergency shelters.
Thank you. The voting is now working. Please vote. Voting interface.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. Item number thirty-seven, our last public hearing item, is adoption of a resolution, excuse me, adoption of a resolution adopting a negative declaration for the housing element update, an adoption of a resolution approving general plan amendment, that's GPA twenty-one dash zero 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 two, to update the housing element for the 2021 to 2029 planning period with revisions as prescribed by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from councilmembers and constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and a few emails from the public.
Staff and a few emails as well.
Staff and public.
Staff, public.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions to be presented?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. We are, we begin our testimony with Mr. Rob Demowski, Senior Planner. I said that lightly.
Demowski.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
Thank you for correcting me. I appreciate that, actually.
Yes, absolutely. Rob Demowski with the Development Services Department, here this evening to present the housing element update, and this was prepared in partnership with Veronica Tam and Associates. And this is a request to adopt a negative declaration and to approve a general plan amendment to update the housing element for the sixth cycle. In accordance with state law, the city is required to update the housing element every eight years. The sixth cycle runs from April 15th, 2021, to April 15th, 2029. The housing element must be adopted within 120 days of that date, and the deadline is August 15th of this year. The primary function of the housing element is to identify the housing needs of all Oceanside residents and establish goals and strategies for developing and preserving an adequate housing supply for all income levels. The housing element places an emphasis on providing housing for lower-income households as well as special needs groups. The housing element consists of five required components. The housing needs assessment evaluates Oceanside's existing housing supply, the population, employment, and household characteristics to address topics such as low-income housing needs, overpayment, and overcrowding of households. Special groups identifies and addresses the housing needs of groups such as farmworker housing, large households, female-headed households, people experiencing homelessness, as well as people with disabilities and seniors. The housing sites inventory identifies vacant and non-vacant sites throughout the city that have the capacity to accommodate the housing needs over the next cycle. The constraints analysis identifies both governmental and non-governmental constraints that potentially hinder housing production, and this can include government codes and regulations, permit processing, and on the non-governmental constraints, habitat, site constraints, construction costs, and so on. And finally, the housing action plan contains the goals, policies, and programs that will be used to implement the housing, how the city will implement and achieve the housing goals over the next cycle. State housing law requires that all regions of the state accommodate their fair share of housing, which is known as the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA for short. As part of the San Diego region, Oceanside received an allocation of 5,443 units distributed into four income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, and that's based on the San Diego median income of $74,900 a year. The city will receive credit for any housing projects that were built, entitled, or under review since June 30th of 2020, and this includes accessory dwelling units, which we get credit for the anticipated number of units that can be built over the eight-year cycle based on development trends. So it's anticipated that the city will receive a total of 2,611 units, leaving a remaining RENA obligation of 2,832 units. An assessment of sites within the existing residential land use designation in the city indicate that we would have a capacity for 1,441 units under the existing land use, leaving a shortfall of 1,391 units. Therefore, properties would need to be rezoned to increase the capacity, and as proposed, the mixed-use allowance in certain areas would be increased from 29 dwelling units an acre to a base of 35 to 43 dwelling units an acre, which would provide a surplus of 3,460 units. And the surplus is based on the housing sites of our proposed plan to incorporate mixed-use sites and also ensure that there's a known net loss of housing. There's a project approved that is on a parcel at a lower density that what the site can accommodate. The density must be accommodated on another site in the inventory, or the city must look for alternative sites to account for that unmet RENA need. The housing sites inventory, as mentioned, contains sites that are suitable for residential development and demonstrates that there's adequate capacity for the remaining RENA need of 2,832 units. And for this cycle, the housing sites will focus on infill and redevelopment opportunities along the major transit and commercial corridors of Mission Avenue, Oceanside Boulevard, Vista Way, as well as Coast Highway. This effort will rely on two regulatory documents, the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Specific Plan and the Coast Highway Incentive District that was recently adopted pending Coastal Commission approval, and the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan, specific plan seeks to channel future housing growth and employment along the city's major corridors and will identify ways to facilitate infill and redevelopment in these corridors with incentives and permit streamlining to encourage the production of housing. And the Coast Highway Incentive District seeks to transform Coast Highway into, through high-quality development and urban design, and would allow additional density, in some cases standalone residential, and expedite permit processing in exchange for public benefits. Both of these, these planning efforts rely on commercially zoned properties that allow mixed-use residential development as part of a project. Sites were selected based on several factors, including unutilized land, the age of existing development with focus on properties that have buildings or uses that are 40 years or older. We received evaluated interest from property owners who have come forward with plans to develop residential or mixed use, and sites were also evaluated on access to transit and availability of utilities. Housing law places an emphasis on public participation, and as part of our update process, public participation played an important role in drafting the goals and policies to implement the housing element. The project team conducted several outreach efforts, including establishing the general plan update website. We had periodic newsletters, focus group discussions with housing proponents, development and real estate representatives. We had a bilingual online survey, planning office hours where residents could contact planning staff and ask questions, and then also a dedicated housing element workshop along with other workshops held in conjunction with the general plan update, including one focused on land use. As a result of these efforts, some of the key themes that emerged, the number one comment received was related to overcrowding and affordability, followed closely by addressing homelessness and providing transitional housing services with supportive services that ultimately will help address, provide them with long-term housing. Residents would like to see high-quality housing and also a wide range of housing that would include small and large or various size households. There is strong support for preserving existing neighborhoods and building mixed-use housing within the transit corridors, and there is also strong support for promoting smart growth and support for not converting agricultural land in open space. And we heard a reoccurring comment to request a prohibition on short-term rentals for new housing projects, especially those that use the density bonus provisions. So any unit that is intended for low-income housing or meeting that requirement would be restricted from short-term rental. So that was a common comment. The housing elements action plan contains multiple goals and policies. The city will implement to address a number of the important housing-related issues over the next cycle and to highlight some of the key goals, to produce opportunities for decent and affordable housing opportunities for all Oceanside residents, encourage a variety of housing options with special emphasis on a broad range of housing types and varied amenities with different options on the amount of bedrooms, and to promote equal opportunity for all residents to reside in the housing of their choice. And some of the key policies associated with this goal include to promote a high-quality urban environment with stable residential neighborhoods and healthy business districts, encourage higher-density housing along transit corridors, and smart growth opportunity areas to encourage preservation of natural resources and agricultural land, and to reduce energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions, and a policy to explore a form of a cap on short-term rentals to preserve long-term housing stock. There is also a policy to encourage the dispersment of lower and moderate-income housing opportunities throughout the city rather than concentrate them in certain areas, and also to a policy to encourage inclusionary housing to be built with new development either onsite or offsite rather than paying in lieu fee. The housing program section contains 20 programs that will be implemented to address a number of these housing-related issues. While many of the programs are carried over from the previous cycles, others have been amended or added to comply with state requirements. And a majority of these programs will be implemented by the city's housing division and often in cooperation with the planning division on these tasks. And I'll highlight some of the key programs in this housing element. And I'll highlight some of the key programs in this Housing Element. For program number five, related to accessory dwelling units, the city will seek to use community development block grant funding to help fund unpermitted ADUs and bring those up to code in eligible neighborhoods. So these focus on areas where there might be a garage conversion and a need for additional housing, and this would provide an opportunity to help these residents bring their units up to code with reduced cost and no issues with dealing with code enforcement penalties. Program seven for adequate sites. The plan will require to rezone at least 33 acres for residential development within a density range of 35 dwelling units to 43 dwelling units an acre to accommodate the city's RENA shortfall of 1,391 units. Program number eight, and this is per Assembly Bill 1397, recent housing law, requires us to amend the zoning ordinance to require by right approval of housing developments that propose 20% of the units as affordable to lower-income households, and this will be a by-right process. Qualified sites will be sites that are identified in the sixth cycle RENA, as well as any carryover sites from the fourth or fifth cycle. And finally, one of the newest programs is affirmatively furthering fair housing, and this, in 2017, Assembly Bill 686 introduced an obligation for the city to affirmatively further fair housing. And this means taking meaningful actions to overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity for persons of color, persons with disability, and other protected classes. The Housing Element must include an assessment of fair housing, which includes specific components, including a summary of fair housing issues, an assessment of the city's fair housing enforcement, an outreach capacity, an analysis of segregation patterns and disparities in access to opportunities and contributing factors, and identification of fair housing goals and actions. And there is a program 20 describes the specific actions that the city will implement for this item. The Housing Element is intended to provide goals, policy, and programs to facilitate the development of housing for all Oceanside residents of all income levels, including special needs groups. Aligning with the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan and the Coast Highway Incentive District, the Housing Element will focus future housing growth on infill and redevelopment opportunities within transit-served areas, and will place an emphasis on themes that have carried over from the first phase of the General Plan Update that include quality of life, resilience, and sustainability. Incorporating recommended revisions by the Department of Housing and Community Development will ensure that the Housing Element is in full compliance with state law, which benefits the city in many ways, including eligibility for state funding and avoiding penalties for not having an updated housing law, which would require the Housing Element to be evaluated and updated every four years rather than an eight-year cycle. As required by law, the city submitted the draft Housing Element to HCD on April 2 of this year for a 60-day review. HCD provided preliminary feedback in May and contacted staff to discuss those preliminary items, and in response, staff revised the draft to address these comments and resubmitted to HCD. On June 1, HCD provided a formal letter detailing the necessary items to bring the Housing Element into compliance with state law. Many of these items include technical revisions and requests for additional information in order to meet the full intent of the law. Due to the August 15 deadline, staff has recommended that the City Council adopt the Housing Element in its current form, and staff will continue to work with HCD and our housing consultant to address the remaining items. And staff would also make the proposed amendments available for public review and comment prior to submitting for HCD. And once HCD reviews the comments and determines that we're in full compliance with state law, we would bring any required amendments back to City Council for consideration and adoption at a later date. And I should note that the August 15, the state law requires us to adopt a Housing Element, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a fully compliant Housing Element in order to meet that deadline. Staff brought the draft Housing Element to the Housing Commission on May 25 for review and comment. No formal vote or recommendation was made, but the commission did provide feedback, and some of the key comments included a need to provide adequate housing for all income levels, not just the very low. There was a comment that moderate should also be focused on as much as the lower income, that units should be, lower-income units should be made simpler with less cost in order to make them affordable, and there was also support for protecting existing neighborhoods. On June 7, the Planning Commission considered the draft Housing Element and voted unanimously recommending City Council approval of the draft Housing Element, and they included a recommendation that the Housing Element include both a policy that veterans and active-duty military, their housing needs be addressed, and also to identify them as a special group, special needs group in the Housing Element, which is allowed for the city to voluntarily Based on staff analysis and the Planning Commission's recommendation, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution adopting a negative declaration for the Housing Element update and adopt a resolution approving General Plan Amendment GPA 2102 to update the Housing Element for the 2021 through 2029 planning period with revisions as prescribed by the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'll mention that we have our housing consultant representative, Alexis Bueno, on the phone with Veronica Kamm and Associates, and she'll be available for any questions as well as myself. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Demasky. This is a public hearing. This is the time set for comments to be received from the public. You do not have to have signed up to speak. If you wish to speak, please approach one of the podiums, and you would have up to three minutes to speak.
We do have...
I see no one rising. I understand we do have one person wishing to speak from the public, two people by Zoom. Mr. Navarro?
Correct. We have Diane Nygaard to be followed by Sherri Mackin. Mrs. Nygaard, you're on.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilwoman Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. Our staff has done such a good job with this housing element by focusing our housing growth along transportation corridors and smart-growth sites in a way that meets arena numbers for all income levels while still protecting our neighborhoods and revitalizing our commercial corridors and reducing greenhouse gases and VMT. It was a tall order, but this plan has actually achieved that. But our overall, this is just one element of our overall general plan, and we need to make sure that all of the elements work together. This one is very good. It's critical. It has particular state requirements, but we need to make sure that all of the elements support that. We have particular concerns about the South Morro Hills Community Plan because we really see that it jeopardizes many of the good things that have been included in this. And of course, there are other elements of the general plan that we have not yet seen, so we don't know yet if they're consistent or not. So while we certainly support this, at this point in time, we would certainly ask you to direct staff to continue to refine this as we move forward to make sure that all elements of our general plan work together and fully support this housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Sherri Mackin. We're getting Ms. Mackin on the line here.
Thank you.
Sherri, you're on.
Thank you. I appreciate Rob's report, and I concur with Ms. Nygaard's comments. The staff really went the extra mile on this, and I know the community certainly appreciated it, and I did too. I attended all the meetings, and his report is pretty accurate, especially his concerns about residents' concerns about housing in the transit corridor, particularly Coast Highway. Many were concerned, including me, about properties receiving density bonuses for housing in transit corridors becoming short-term vacation rentals. And the only way to ensure housing on the Coast Highway doesn't become short-term vacation rentals would be by deed restriction. I highly suggest that the council look at deed restricting housing in transit corridors for housing and not short-term vacation rentals. Let's use this plan and ensure that we have the housing we need. Thank you very much for your time, and excellent, staff did an excellent job.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and begin a discussion by council members and also welcome a motion. Councilmember Weiss?
Yes, I have a question for staff and then a comment. Under program seven, adequate sites to accommodate RENA, you're talking about revising the density limits from 35 to 43 DUs per acre. My question is, similar to downtown, is there a reason we have a cap at 43? Because if somebody can meet the requirements for parking and setback in height, does it matter if they're going to build 43 2,000-square-foot apartments or 86 1,000-square-foot apartments? I mean, wouldn't it, does it really, do we really need to have that 43 DU per acre cap? And I don't need you to answer now. I know you would like for us to prove it, but I understand, as we're going forward with the potential changes from HCD, I would at least like staff to look at it, and if we have to readopt this or later on, I'd at least like to have some input at that point in time to look at raising that cap. Because I know we did it for downtown. It would certainly, to me, make sense from a design perspective if they can meet the requirements to not have that cap. And then the other comment I have is, under program eight, by right approval with 20% affordable units. This is one of those impositions by the state, which essentially, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong here, that if a project comes in and they do 20% affordable units onsite, and they apply for density bonus, and they get certain waivers, this is essentially saying this is going to be approved over the counter with no Planning Commission hearing and no opportunity to come to City Council. Is that correct?
Mr. Santos, Councilmember Weiss, that would be correct. However, with the General Plan Update, the city does have the ability to come up with objective, reasonable design criteria for projects that can be applied for architectural review, but overall, the project itself would cannot involve discretion if the project meets the specific criteria outlined in the law.
So, for example, if there's a project in along a transit corridor in Fire Mountain, in Branch of Deloro, that meets this criteria, it gets approved over the counter, no sign on the property, no public hearings at all?
That would be correct.
Thank you. And I would move approval of staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Policy 1.7. It says, "Explore a form of a cap on STRs, which are short-term rentals, to preserve housing stock." Where'd he go? You hiding from me?
He's taller than I am, so...
Is this more of just exploratory? I also heard you say some other items with short-term vacation rentals. So I just want to make this clear. I actually got out of the short-term vacation rental business right after being elected because it was such a controversial issue, so I don't have that as an issue anymore. I don't deal with short-term vacation rentals anymore. I don't own them. But a lot of owners that own property, that have, they're retired, that have it as an income, we have an amazing policy that we've just implemented that has an enforcement officer, plans, rules, criteria, and it creates a lot of revenue, and it will create a lot of revenue for our city that helps fund a lot of our operations. With that being said, how deep are, does this policies go into limiting private property rights of owners to be able to, you know, turn into a vacation rental? That's their right as an owner. Can you explain that and go into that, please?
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez. The policy is intended to, for the city to be able to explore and evaluate the impacts of short-term rentals on the city's long-term housing stock, and it would be a matter of reporting those findings to the City Council and taking that data. The council can make an informed decision on whether or not there is a need for additional oversight or regulation of the current short-term rental regulations.
Okay. So it's just, it's initiated by staff to bring up, or we already have a policy dealing with short-term vacation rentals that are working? So I'm just, I'm curious why I have the need to incorporate it. I get for ADUs, yeah, I hit that, you know, mobile home parks and rent control, I hit that. Density... Oh, I'm so sorry. Density bonuses where, you know, they're supposed to be affordable units, and now the owner wants to turn them into vacation, I get that. But I'm talking about just units that are built, bought by the private sector. Hey, he just changed his mind, and he wants to turn into a vacation rental. He should be able to, and I don't want to be able to impede on private property rights when it comes to that.
Councilmember Rodriguez, the policy is not intended to regulate the current STR. It's just a matter of, it was a concern heard by the public, and as a matter of policy to provide a mechanism that we monitor and STRs and determine if there's any impacts on long-term housing, and if there's a need to further address that at a later date.
Got it. Would that also include long-term rentals of 12 months or more? Because that also takes up housing.
Right. I believe the focus to be on short-term rental of 30 days or less for this purpose of this policy.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
Hi, Mr. Domhousky, just a couple of questions, and I appreciate all your time briefing the Housing Element. My important point I brought up when we spoke was maintaining our single-family neighborhoods. And so with our 1,391 units, I just want to reiterate, the rezoning, we're not going to have to change zoning in our single-family neighborhoods to make that RENA number, correct?
Deputy Mayor, that is correct. All of the potential rezoned sites will be located within the boundaries of the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Specific Plan, and those rezones would be essentially upzoning the density allowance for mixed-use parcels.
Okay. And that's critical to me. I think we're on this trend where we are trying to eliminate single-family zoning in the state, and I think it'll be catastrophic. But as we go through, I mean, we have SB 9, which is passed the committee. It's going to another one next week, which will essentially let you split your lot in a single-family neighborhood and add an ADU. And I think this is important, why we need to keep the STR option open, because the state is pushing all of these bills on us and taking away local control and zoning from Sacramento, our neighborhoods. And if they're going to do that for the need for more housing, then we absolutely need to address STRs. We don't need to put duplexes in every single-family neighborhood and let, to STRs where a single-family home used to be. So I think that just, we need that flexibility to address that, you know, because that's the push for all these bills, is we need more housing, but, you know, if that gets abused, I think we need to keep an open mind and make sure our STR policy's doing what it's supposed to do, and that's being good neighbors and, you know, keep our zoning. It is what it is. We, you know, you buy in a single-family neighborhood, and you don't expect a hotel next door or, you know, a dense multifamily unit. So that's a priority for me, and I appreciate the fact that we in our city can make our RENA numbers without changing zoning in our single-family neighborhoods, and I think, I wish the rest of the state and state legislators would put a focus on that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion in a second, and I would like to make a couple of comments as well. I have been talking to staff about the ADUs that were done, unpermitted, and that I do believe that we probably have at least 500 units that are unpermitted, even more, that if we could come up with a program to assist residents to, owners, homeowners, to help make them legal, I mean, that would be like overnight, almost overnight, increasing housing units. I am a little concerned about lifting like the caps on density because I think we do have state laws that allow for density bonuses, and then if we have a flexibility, then we can require, you know, certain conditions that we normally would not require if we just allowed the densities to be higher, for example, affordable housing and some other things. For example, affordable housing and some other things. And as to the short-term vacation rentals, we are, and supposedly the reason why we're having all these mandatory laws and also as well, the threat of losing our discretion is because we are in a housing crisis. So commercializing housing does take valuable housing stock away from our market. And bottom line is, it also raises the rents artificially. So I think during this kind of emergency situation, while there are certain cities that are losing populations, San Diego County is not losing populations. So I do feel that it is proper to have that included to monitor the situation with respect to short-term vacation rentals, especially during this specific time period. So, Councilmember Rodriguez, you wish to speak again?
Oh, yes.
Yes?
When we move forward on the streamlined ADU program with the video and the amazing job staff did, I know that jump-started a lot of the ADUs. But one of my questions had to do with fees being assessed by the school district. And I think I asked Jonathan Borrego about it, and it just popped into my head. I apologize. I don't mean to put you on the spot. But there was this unknown variable. If we should be paying a fee to the school district for an ADU, because that's another line item cost that we could try to eliminate, especially with Mayor Sanchez's, you know, suggestion. I agree, there's a lot of individuals that have their garage converted right now, and it is what it is, you know? How can we turn that into an ADU and get them up to comply without having to pay the school district fee for something like that? If you don't know, I get it, but it's something I would definitely like to see if we can get around.
And Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Rodriguez, and other members of the city council, yes. So as was explained when we did bring forward the policy to incentivize ADUs in the city, which, as you mentioned, has been very successful. We've seen a significant uptick in the number of ADU permits that we've been issuing over the last couple of years. While the city does, by policy, waive certain impact fees, you know, unfortunately, the school district fees are beyond the control of the city, and those are still collected. So that does, you know, remain a potential barrier to further incentivizing ADUs at this point in time.
So who's in charge of changing? Is that a council decision to change? Is it a...
No, that's, well, actually, I don't...
How does that see...
Mr. Mullin?
It would be state law. It wouldn't be something within the city.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolutions. Please vote.
Just for clarification, who was the second?
I was the second.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We're on to general items, back to general items. Item number 32, which is authorization to award a contract to ATP General Engineering Contractors of San Diego in the amount of $2.7 million for the 2021 Annual Overlay Project. That's CIP 21-00003. And authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. We have a report by Dara Woods.
Good evening.
Engineer, civil engineer. It's working.
And if any members of the public wish to get a copy of the previous presentations that were not able to be projected, they could certainly contact the clerk's office, and we can provide copies of those to the members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Vado.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Dara Woods, Senior Civil Engineer in the Engineering Department. And the item before you tonight is the award of contract for the overlay project. Staff is recommending that city council award a contract to ATP General Engineering Contractors of San Diego and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Streets were selected using the city's pavement management program, distributing the work throughout the four districts, citizen comments, looking at available funding, and also grouping the streets in neighborhoods and areas. And streets were grouped in areas in an effort to reduce costs, get them on a similar maintenance schedule, and also minimize inconvenience to the public. Work is being distributed in all four districts this year, and work includes street overlays, street inlays, and full-depth reclamation. Additionally, ADA improvements, utility adjustments, survey monumentation, and striping is included in this year's contract. Construction scheduled to start midsummer and will go through late fall. The contract price with ATP General Engineering Contractors is $2,775,230. And we have various funding sources that include Transnet, SB 1, and Measure X. That concludes my presentation with staff recommending that city council award the contract to ATP General Engineering Contractors. And I'm available for any questions may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss? Oh, wait. Do we have any comments from the public?
No, no comments from the public.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0. Council, Deputy Mayor Keim's absent from the dais right now.
Okay. So we're moving on to item number 33. And that is authorization to commit $3.5 million in inclusionary housing in Lufi's and 59 project-based Section 8 housing choice vouchers to National Community Renaissance and San Diego Community Housing Corporation for an affordable housing development located on the west side of Greenbrier Drive between Apple and Oceanside Boulevard for homeless individuals and extremely low-income persons in response to the city's call for proposals and notice of funding availability. Also authorization for staff to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents and issue a letter of conditional approval and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Our report is by Ms. Megan Crooks, Interim Neighborhood Services Director. Ms. Crooks?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Megan Crooks, Neighborhood Services Department. This evening, I'm happy to come back to you and present staff's recommendation that the city council and the Community Development Commission commit $3,500,000 in inclusionary housing in Lufi's and 59 project-based vouchers from Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program to National Community Renaissance of California and San Diego Community Housing Foundation for an affordable housing development located at the west side of Greenbrier Drive between Apple Street and Oceanside Boulevard for homeless individuals and extremely low-income persons in response to the city's call for proposals and notice of funding availability. Also to authorize staff to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement and issue a letter of conditional approval and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. On September 9, 2020, the city council directed staff to issue a notice of funding availability and a request for proposals. And the priorities for the release of those was to prioritize proposals assisting persons experiencing homelessness and extremely low individuals and families. On March 1, 2021, staff issued the NOFA, requesting proposals for sheltering as well as affordable housing developments. The NOFA included funding sources such as project-based vouchers, home funds, permanent local housing allocation, low mod funds, and inclusionary housing funds. The deadline for the proposals was April 16, and staff received two proposals at that time. The proposal we're discussing this evening is National Community Renaissance of California and San Diego Community Housing Corporation that requested $3.5 million in inclusionary funds and 59 project-based vouchers. We also received another, a second proposal from Red Point Homes, requesting eight project-based vouchers only. And that's for an already entitled and approved project known as San Piper Villas. That will be coming forward to the city council in August for the request for appropriation of those project-based vouchers. So this evening, we're discussing the Greenbrier Village Apartments. The project itself is a 60-unit apartment community for extremely low-income individuals and families. And 50 units are going to be for permanent supportive housing. The property is located on .71 acres west of Greenbrier Drive between Apple Street and Oceanside Boulevard. And the 50 units for permanent supportive housing are studios, and there are nine one-bedroom units. And the 60th unit is a manager's unit. These supportive services provided, would be provided for all residents on the property. The proposed service providers in the proposal include, but not necessarily limited to, County of San Diego Behavioral Health Services, Veterans Administration, Interfaith Community Services, San Ysidro Health, the PACE program for seniors, and Hope Through Housing Foundation. The funding requests made included three alternative financing strategies that were proposed, and A, a Strategy A, B, and C, and staff's recommending Strategy C. We did discuss this with National Core and their project team. It is the best strategy to further leverage funds and position the project to obtain highly competitive 9% tax credits. Other proposals required more money from the city to make their project competitive in leveraging further funds. The construction completion under this strategy would be June 20 of 2024. And the project funding includes a private bank loan, the City of Oceanside in Lufi's, and the San Diego County No Place Like Home program funds, and low-income tax credit equity. Financing Strategy 3 requests, from the City of Oceanside, that would include $3.5 million in inclusionary funds, and it would include 59 Section 8 project-based vouchers to serve extremely low-income individuals and families, 50 for persons or families who are experiencing homelessness. And the breakdown, there would be five studio units, and those would be VASH vouchers for homeless veterans. 29 studio units would be for, through our mainstream vouchers for adults with disabilities ages 18 to 61. And there would be 16 studio units. Those would be regular vouchers with services. And then nine one-bedroom units for persons at risk of homelessness. The experience put forward in this application of National Core, Community Renaissance of California, and SDCHC, NCRC established, was established in 1992, and SDCHC was established in 1994, and have been furthering affordable housing development since. And NCRC developed our Mission Cove family units here in the City of Oceanside, as well as La Misión, and the rehabilitation of the Cape Cod Senior Villas. NCRC has developed and owns and manages 12 special needs and permanent supportive housing apartment communities totaling 199 units. The Greenbrier Village Apartments, the overall concept is a four-story Mediterranean Mission-style building. It has a courtyard with outdoor terrace, barbecue area, and community garden space. There's 2,700-square-foot community center. This would be the hub for the supportive services, and it would be accessible to the neighborhood. So it would be open to the public. The location at Greenbrier, it's a half-mile to public transit. It's near grocery stores, a pharmacy, as well as a public health clinic known as True Care. This is a rendering of the concept that was submitted in the proposal of the front, the view from Greenbrier Drive and the main entrance. And this is a bird's-eye view of the lot. There's a parking lot, and you can see the courtyard discussed. There are studio units in the building to the north and the smaller building near the courtyard. And then the one-bedroom units are in the building to the east, and the frontage is all administrative office and leasing. Here's the massing model of what that would look like in a concept model. This project still would need to go through the development process. I believe that it doesn't require CUP, but it still requires a development plan and would come back through that process to the planning commission. And then these are the floor plans for the studio apartment, the one-bedroom, and then a two-bedroom manager's apartment. The exclusive negotiating agreement, so staff's asking the city council to authorize us to enter an exclusive negotiating agreement. That would provide for us to have 180 days to negotiate the affordable housing agreement. And it would outline the city loan terms, the affordable housing agreement would outline the city loan terms. It would discuss the provisions around project-based voucher use and inclusion of those, infrastructure requirements, scope of development, and the timeline and other conditions that would be required for the city to loan funding to this development. And then we're also asking for the approval of the conditional letter of approval, stating that the funding and project-based vouchers will be awarded provided that the specific conditions are met that we come forward with in the affordable housing agreement. That affordable housing agreement will come back to the city council for approval before we move forward. The conditional letter of approval also enables National Core to move forward with securing other funding sources, such as the county No Place Like Home funds, and continue to leverage the additional financing for the project. Staff's recommendation, again, is that the city council and Community Development Commission commit $3,500,000 in inclusionary housing in Lufi's and 59 project-based Section 8 housing choice vouchers to National Community Renaissance of California and San Diego Community Housing Foundation for an affordable housing development located on the west side of Greenbrier Drive between Apple Street and Oceanside Boulevard for homeless individuals and extremely low persons in response to the city's call for proposals and notice of funding availability. Authorize staff to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement and issue a letter of conditional approval and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. In addition to that, to commit the $3.5 million, what we're asking for is, that would be set aside in the inclusionary housing in Lufi fund. And if we will, if it were to ever be used for something else, it would require us to come back to city council to reallocate it for something. So it wouldn't be able to be utilized toward anything else in the interim until we get to that loan agreement. And we have John Seymour here this evening with National Core. So if, I know that he does have a presentation. If you would like to hear his presentation on this project, he is available to do that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Crooks. So, Mr. Seymour. I, I'm, could you say a few things about this project? Because I know that you're dying to say a few words. Like, maybe three minutes?
Absolutely. We have on the Zoom call A.J. Galcagonya, who is our Permanent Supporting Housing Director in Resident Services. We also have the CEO and President of San Diego Community Housing Corporation, Mr. Ted Mihahara, also to hear, to ask her any questions. If any questions related to case management services, I would direct those to A.J., and I will handle financing, and Ted will handle the financing. I'm John Seymour from National Core. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We have over 10,000 apartment homes in our portfolio. We were founded back in 1992. Today, we have 266 affordable homes serving 762 Oceanside residents that are seniors at risk, kids coming out of the foster care system, veterans, families, and seniors. We have substantial permanent supportive housing experience. We have worked in several cities throughout California, in San Diego County, for example, in Escond... in Escondido. We'll be going vertical on 50 permanent supportive homes in February of 2022 with the approval of Escondido City Council and in partnership with SDCHC. We also have one in San Diego City that's going vertical in 2023. We're also proud to be working with the Veterans Administration, Interfaith Community Services, and other local nonprofits. We are also working with the county at the request of the Housing Commission to include three units for TAE, if that is okay for the City Council. So what we would have is designating of the 59 studios, sorry, of the 59 units, three studios for transition-age youth, TAE, five veteran studios through VASH, Veterans Administration, nine one-bedrooms for at-risk, extremely low-income families, which is per the recommendation, and the other studios would be for other people experiencing homelessness. So what we're doing is adding three TAE units, if that is okay with the mayor and council. If not, we will proceed with those being not set aside for TAE. Regarding stakeholder support, we have letters in support from the VA, the Regional Task Force on the Homeless, the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, Interfaith Community Services, and the Alliance for Regional Solutions. So, Greenbrier Village, and this is important to know, that this is going to be permanent supportive housing in perpetuity. You've heard 55 years. This is going to be in perpetuity. It's not going to roll to market rate. This is a long-term investment. The site, we've had the site in Escrow since March of 2019, and in our opinion, it is a wonderful site. It's adjacent to the Kraut Street Trolley Station, the bus line, close to the VA and other services and retail. It's also by right ministerial. As staff mentioned, we do not need a CUP. We don't need zoning changes. We do need a development plan, being approved by the Planning Commission. On the $3.5 million, that's not a grant, that's a loan, and we've had extreme success with paying back these loans over time. And we're leveraging over seven to one, meaning for every $1 of the $3.5, we're bringing $7 to the table. We're also, we've also submitted a $6 million application to the county for No Place Like Home funds, and they're ready and willing to start review with your action tonight. Besides the $6 million and your $3.5, we're going to leverage with $16 million in private sector money, both debt and equity. Private money, not government money. This is example of a true private partnership. In conclusion, I'm going to say that permanent supportive housing works. Why? If our residents don't take advantage of case management services, they will be on a very short-term lease agreement with us. Most people that handle and go into case management will be successful. Those that don't will be evicted. We will have a huge waiting list through the Oceanside's list and the coordinated entry system. So we are going to have a full house going forward with the people that want help and the people that ask for help, but those that don't will probably be gone, and that's how this works. So with that said, I'd like to introduce A.J. Galcagonye for a very, very short statement. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I wanted to highlight the services very briefly. We've taken best practices approach, strategically partnered with North County, county-wide, successful partnership. We're focusing on Oceanside's vulnerable residents in the community, those experiencing affordability hardship, those who are experiencing homelessness. More specifically, we have dedicated onsite coordination, case management, and have the whatever-it-takes mentality to support retention and having folks remain housed. Case managers will support and guide tenants through the process, using evidence-based approaches that we've actually seen firsthand within our portfolio. So it's not just these concepts out in the universe, it's things that we've actually seen that work, and we've tested across numerous properties. Without tunnel vision, we're looking at social determinants of health. How does this improve a community's health and wellness on all different levels, socioeconomic, financial, and so forth? And keeping retention in mind, housing first, retention equates to system cost savings. Many California studies have shown a range of 50% of cost savings from when someone was homeless utilizing the system, from when they go into housing and stay housed. And the amount that saves over time just compounds for a community, whether it be police use, emergencies, and so forth. Our approach of housing retention focused, client-centric, trauma-informed care will emphasize assisting tenants to stay, remain, stay, remain, stay, remain, stay, remain, house, increase independence, and achieve high quality of life overall. Services include intensive case management, site service coordination, developing a support network within their community, whether it be a senior center, a church, a local group, crisis intervention, good things happen, referrals to on- or off-site community resources for employment, trade certification education, integrated behavioral health, physical care, substantive services, onsite partnerships, and services beyond that. Thank you so much for your time, and we hope you support this beautiful development in our Oceanside community for our vulnerable Oceanside neighbors. And I'll hand it over to Ted. Ted Mihahara.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and have him speak on items on, as part of the public comment, because I believe that's where he's set up to do. So go ahead and begin the public comments.
Mr. Navarro? Okay. Our first public comment is from Amber Newman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Amber Newman. I'm a 16-year resident and cooperator of a business that overlooks this project site. It's as a business operator that I'm speaking tonight. Every day, we are faced with ramifications of the consolidation of services that are already here. You are creating a blighted area by putting all of these services in one spot. Adding another one will further stifle the area and make it even harder for area businesses to be successful. Businesses will leave, and the only uses that will remain will be those related to homeless services. Is that really the impression we want to make when visitors arrive on our city's namesake boulevard? Oceanside is a large city with many opportunities and many properties. I am not anti-shelter, and I'm not an envy. I see every day how much we need projects such as this. But forcing one neighborhood or one street to bear the brunt of what is a citywide problem puts an undue burden on everyone in the Greenbrier Apple Street area. It's not fair, it's not right, and it's not necessary. I urge you to please vote no tonight and direct staff to help the developer find a more suitable location that will more equitably distribute these services to other areas where they are also needed. Thank you.
Our next public comments from Ted Mihahara, to be followed by Greg Anglia in person. Mr. Mihahara?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Ted Mihahara, President of the San Diego Community Housing Corporation. As co-developer, I am in favor of the proposed development. I think John Seymour and A.J. covered most of it, but I'd like to say a few things. The City of Oceanside has the fourth-largest homeless population in the County of San Diego. Over 400 individuals were identified as homeless in the last point-in-time count conducted by the San Diego Regional Task Force on the homelessness. Homelessness is an issue that is not going to solve itself. Permanent supportive housing is a strategy to end homelessness. There's really no arguing this. We see public agencies adopting this locally, up and down the state, and nationally because it works. The project before you was designed to permanently take people off the streets and provide them with a home. We will target the most vulnerable populations that desperately need a home. We're talking seniors, veterans, transition-age youth, and those experiencing serious mental illness. The project serves as an entry point to get people back on their feet and back into the traditional norms of society. It's really a solution-based strategy designed to produce outcomes. I just want to thank City Council and city staff for their thoughtful approach. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about this very issue, and the release for funding and rental subsidy was great, and staff went through it very methodically and thoughtfully, and just want to thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Greg, you're up next.
Honorable Mayor and Council members, I'm here to speak as CEO of Interfaith Community Services and also on behalf of the Alliance for Regional Solutions, who strongly endorse this project. Permanent supportive housing projects that are well-run and that partner with community-based services are upgrades to the communities that they serve in. I would welcome anyone with any concerns to visit Mission Cove here in Oceanside, operated by National Core. I would invite you to visit other permanent supportive housing projects where Interfaith Community Services provides onsite services, as we plan to do at this location, with a full-time, master's-level social worker dedicated entirely, supporting the individuals at this site. We fully support it, believe it will be a wonderful addition to the community, and it will also be lifesaving. It will be lifesaving for the people who are able to move into a center, a home, a home like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. To the council, I have to say, I am so excited about this project. We, I wondered how we were going to be able to address our mental health, the populations of the homeless. That is the most difficult to address. We just don't have any services, very many services in North County, and this would be a model for other, for other communities. I know that the county is really excited about this. In fact, you know, I, it's something that we had been talking about for several months now. You know, how, how can we do a project that will, in fact, include addressing our mentally ill and, that are homeless? And I, and I just, this is so wonderful. It's wraparound services. I, you know, from $6 million down to $3.5 million, I don't know how you did that, but it is a loan also on top of all that, and it, this is a commitment for lifetime affordable housing. It's just a fantastic thing, and I, I never thought we'd be able to see something like this. It is really, truly just something that we, that, that meets all of our requirements, expectations, and even more. So I really, really, so I'm going to be moving that we approve this. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Phew, here we go again. So I appreciate staff's presentation. This, this particular project and developer approached council a while back with a pretty interesting plan that we didn't move on, obviously, and so they're back again. I appreciate the concept and the idea and the need for affordable housing, which is government-subsidized housing. Again, there's a population that is in our city that will be dependent on government for the rest of their life, you know, disabled senior, 100%, you know, mentally ill individual with no room for recovery. But when you consolidate, you know, a bunch of homeless individuals or families into one location, there tends to be great impacts. And so if, I don't mean to put you on the spot, chief, but if you can come down and maybe briefly go over some call-for-service numbers for the Mission Cove project, that would be helpful. In my analysis, the calls for service are, are pretty high for that consolidated area. I don't, I don't know if you have any particular estimates or numbers for that area, and if there's any recommendations from your office on mitigating for those, those call, additional impacts for a project similar to this?
Councilmember Rodriguez, I apologize. This is not something I'm prepared to share tonight. I do not have any of those statistics.
Okay. Any, anybody have any idea of the call-for-service numbers? No? Okay. Well, they're really high, and I look forward to seeing those numbers. They're exceptionally high. Staff is going to be negotiating an exclusive agreement on terms. I noticed that this $3.5 million is going to go toward the acquisition of the property. What are those terms going to look like? What sort of interest rate are we going to be getting? Megan, if you can step up to the plate, you know, these, these inclusionary housing funds are extremely valuable, and we're in the middle of a general plan amendment that's going to allow for the private developers with their projects to actually build on and off-site. And these project-based vouchers and these, these funds are going to help piggyback on building as many affordable units as possible and spreading them out with different projects. So what sort of negotiating are we talking about with the $3.5 million loan?
The typical loan that we're going to be doing in this case, which helps leverage the additional financing for the project, would be a residual receipts-type loan, and it would be about a 3% simple interest, and we have the loan for 55 years, at which time it would need to be paid back in full. Those are the basic terms of the loan.
Where did the 3% come from? Because that's not market.
Okay, I, with regard to that, I'd like to bring up Leilani Hines, our new housing director, who is very familiar with this.
Good evening, council. Today's my first day here. Well, third day.
I was going to introduce you.
I know.
This is our new neighborhood direct services director.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, quite, quite an evening tonight with a lot of housing topics for you. So typically, in affordable housing financing, it's leveraging of multiple sources. It's, it's a stacking of decks. For affordable housing financing from a local government is usually what we term soft financing. So it's a residuals receipts loan. 3% is the typical interest rate. It's a below-market interest rate. Otherwise, if you don't go down to soft financing, it's very difficult for an affordable housing developer to entice or get that senior, the senior loan. So 3% is pretty industry standard, particularly when you're dealing with a nonprofit affordable housing developer. And residual receipts, we get paid after all, the other, the other lenders are paid before us, the developer fee, et cetera.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that feedback, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. I disagree with the 3%. I think it's a negotiation between a city. That's why there's going to be an agreement. And I think only leveraging $3.5 million when it's used at 3% is unacceptable.
Okay.
And so I definitely want that to be negotiated at market rate. As far as the private developer's competitiveness, that depends on their own skin, skin in the game. They've flaunted the fact that they have over 10,000 units, and they've done multiple of these projects. I just don't want that at the expense of the taxpayer. I want that to be leveraged to the full capacity we're able to. So I definitely want, as a condition of this, and hopefully I have support on the dais, that negotiations need to be at market rate, and they will figure it out, because there's a lot of monetary incentive for this developer in moving forward that, you know, he, he will make in moving forward. I didn't see any skin in the game personally from this developer. That's typically how it works with the affordable housing development. And if you want to come up here, sir, and if, if there's skin in the game you're willing to put down, or at least state, that's great, but I've heard it's nothing but 100% leveraging.
If you could just wait. Yeah. Let's wait. Are you done?
No, I wanted to hear what sort of skin in the game. I, I'm done with the, the 3% question. I want to know the skin in the game part now.
Okay, Ms. Hines, I think that that means that he doesn't have any questions, further questions for you.
Thank you.
But he does have a question for Mr. Seymour. And by the way, I think that, how much have you spent in maintaining control over the, the property? And, and this was a highly competitive situation, and no one else, no, no other developers came forward.
You're out of time, mayor.
No, I'm not.
Your time is up.
All right, so, Mr. Rodriguez, if you were to call any professional third-party consultant like RSG or Kaiser-Marston Associates with your question, and you can certainly talk to Paul Mara, Leilani is absolutely correct. It is an industry-standard, underwriting, 3% residual receipts loan.
That wasn't my question.
Well, I'm just addressing that.
Sir, I'm asking about skin in the game, not an interest rate that we're going to negotiate.
Skin in the game. Apparently, you have not seen Exhibit B attached to your staff report. I'll refer you to Exhibit B, and you tell me what you see, because that is what National Core is going to do. We are going to buy the land prior to the DDA, sir. Prior. We are going to also pay--
Because you approached us before of us buying the land, remember that?
Correct. And you know what I did?
What's that?
Again, you didn't listen. We asked, like Mission Cove-- We asked, like Mission Cove, if you wanted to buy the land and stay in control and ground lease it back to us. That was an option.
That was never presented to us.
Yes, it was.
Look at your materials, look at my, oh my God.
Okay. Go ahead. So you, okay, so you guys are buying the land.
You're freaking me out. Turn to Exhibit B, that's our skin in the game. Read it.
Well, I see numbers, but it doesn't say you're buying it.
We are buying the land acquisition, we're closing the escrow. Have you read the staff report? We have a close of escrow at the end of August, and we're buying it prior to a DDA, plus spending up to 1.9 million.
So, so none of the inclusionary housing funds is going toward the acquisition of this property, is that correct?
The inclusionary housing funds are part of the development cost. The development will cost, the 3.5 million will not be touched, not one penny of it, until we close the construction loan. Once we close the construction loan, that money will come in. By the time the construction loan closes, National Core and SDCHC will have spent in excess of $2 million. So if I come to your council in 180 days and staff presents a DDA, and your council votes no, we will have owned the land and spent over almost $2 million. We will be spanked bad. That's the skin in the game, sir, and you don't understand.
And you know what? And that was not outlined in the staff report. I see numbers here.
I'm going to sit down, mayor. This man is freaking me out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
I love you for this, but I have to...
Is there a second to the motion?
I didn't hear a motion.
I, I made the motion.
So the motion was to approve staff recommendation?
Yes.
I didn't hear it. Okay.
I'll say.
Okay. I don't see any lights unless the, it's not working, or did anybody else want to speak? Nope? There is a lot of skin in this game. This total cost of this project is, what was it?
25 million.
25, I was going to say 28, 25 million dollars, a commitment for wraparound services, which by the way, we have no projects like that. Mission Cove is not a wraparound services project. Mission Cove is not a wrapper. This will be the first one. If, if I could have a wraparound project next to me, I would love that, because that means full, full presence, it's going to mean basically no problems, and it's going to mean that we actually respond to the number-one issue of our community, and that is addressing homelessness. I had an opportunity to speak to, to Scott Ashton today, and he advised me that in their survey, homelessness is their number-one issue. We can't afford to wait anymore. We need to do this. Yes, we did have a proposal to do a affordable housing project from National Core over a year ago. We could have, you know, basically already broken ground and already practically have this built and have additional affording housing, affordable housing units. This is the time, this is for us, we need to do this. We, we cannot, we can't put off our residents, our taxpayers. These are our tax funds. That's it. This, we, we get taxed, and we never get this money back into our community, and we need to start getting our monies back. Councilmember Weiss?
So if I understand, this project is going to include 59 units for Section 8 recipients, and then 50 units for persons and families who are experiencing homelessness. To me, there is not one answer for all of these different issues. For every homeless person, there's a different answer. I'm not going to take 15 minutes to go through my item, I'll try to be finished in about a minute and a half. I'm going to be supporting this, this project. I am going to be interested in seeing the agreements that come forward to us. I have seen some of the other projects that National Core has done, as well as other service providers, and although I may not personally agree with their methodology on each one of them, I think as a city, we need to take advantage of every opportunity we can to help over 100 homeless people and those who are borderline homeless and most in need.
Thank you.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 34. This is approval of Interfaith Community Services as a city's operator for the proposed homeless shelter with wraparound services to be located at 3131 Oceanside Boulevard. Authorization for staff to negotiate a property use agreement and management services agreement to present for future consideration by the city council. Report by Megan Crooks, interim neighborhood service director, who is, but we also have, I guess, I guess you still have that title? With our, with our new...
I'm still Megan Crooks.
Okay.
Go with that.
Councilmember Weiss has a question.
Oh, Councilmember Weiss, yes?
So, mayor and council, I apologize, but I've reviewed the staff report and the proposals received, and have talked to two of the proposers. I'm going to move that we continue this item to a council workshop and offer each proposer the opportunity to make a presentation regarding their plan for the site, their partners, their target homeless population, cost of the program, essentially present to us and the public their proposal, so that we can do it in a public setting and have a much more informed basis to make such an important decision. I'm not prepared tonight to just make a decision on this one, but I would like for this to come back to a workshop and give everyone an opportunity to make a public presentation.
Okay, there is a motion to continue this item to a workshop. I would urge us to address this issue now. Our, we really need to address this issue of homelessness. We have an interim program with vouchers, motel vouchers, which basically was put in place while we get this project forward. The, part of what the council directed was that we do this as a high priority, a shelter, and I believe that we have two, basically two competing projects before us, and we have all the information. I know I've had a chance to speak to staff, I've had a chance to speak with anyone and everyone who has requested to address this issue, and we really, really need to get something going as quickly as possible. We need to start clearing our, or continue clearing our homeless encampments, and we can't do that unless we have something in place, and this is going to delay that, that process. Councilmember Weiss? I thought you, well, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Keim.
I agree with the mayor, we, we have to get something done now, but I think it would be prudent to get it right, and if it's a little bit extra time, I've been impressed with speaking with Mr. Angel from Interfaith, it's not a reflection on that, I just, I would, I would like to explore it publicly and ask a few more questions and make sure we're taking the appropriate steps, but we, we have to get it done quickly. I do agree with you in that, mayor.
Right. We don't, we don't meet at all in July, so it would not be until August, unless we plan on doing an emergency, not emergency, planning on having a workshop in July. Can we do a workshop in July, if that was necessary?
I have my light on.
Well, I'm just, first I'm asking, would everybody be available in July for workshop?
I will not be.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I, I think that, I agree, this is urgent, this is important, but this needs to be done with a lot more public input in the form of a workshop, hearing from multiple vendors, and I think we have the emergency hotel voucher program that staff is managing exceptionally well. I am so impressed with our city staff and their efforts on that. So we are meeting the acute needs of the homeless population with respect to offering a warm bed, wraparound services, all the dynamics that a future shelter will be able to provide, and so moving this forward to a future date, you know, in August or what have you, I think would be very wise, and we only get one chance to do this right. There's a lot of money and a lot of likes on the line, and a workshop committed to this is, is very prudent.
So it would be with, I believe we have two, two, two that applied, is that right? Ms. Larson?
Mayor, yes. We have two applicants that are still meeting the criteria and could be considered, and so staff can schedule presentations for a workshop. Normally workshops would be in the afternoon, I think August 11th would be our first available workshop date.
August 11th? That is, is that a Wednesday?
Yes.
It's a Wednesday. Mr. Angel, are, are you available, August 11th?
I can make very brief comments?
Yes, yes.
Madam mayor? We do have public on this item, and I don't know if we're going to be members of the public item.
Right. I, I, I understand. Mr. Angel, would you like to make some comments? There is a motion for continuance takes precedent.
We, we fully support a, a public dialogue on the project, understand the need to ask questions, I want to provide just context for consideration. We have a proposal to clear the proposed site and install a pre-engineered structure. That is a proposal which the cost of will increase come July 16th due to the increase in materials, expenses, and labor. Our, our quote that we submitted back in April 30th is time-sensitive, so that's an automatic cost increase that you're looking at by delaying. There are people on the streets today who will stay on the streets longer. The motel voucher program is not meeting the needs of homelessness in this community, so that's another, another thing to consider. The most important, however, I would offer, is that the state of California will be releasing money through the Home Key Program to support the renovation and conversion of sites into uses like we are proposing. That will be a highly competitive funding stream, it will most likely be made available this summer as soon as July. If you wait until August, you risk losing being able to secure that competitive funding opportunity. Likewise, staff have submitted consideration for a federal appropriation, there's risk of losing that. There are many ways to leverage any funding you're considering, any delays is going to reduce the likelihood of obtaining those. So I just wanted to share that, that context. Fully support the conversation and the due diligence, and I'm here to support and address any questions if you want to pursue that, but I wanted to share that. Thank you.
My light is on you.
Thank you. How many people do we have for, of public who wish to speak?
We have four members of the public that wish to speak.
Four? Councilmember Rodriguez?
So what I'm hearing, just to clarify, from what I understand, we received more than just two applicants for the NOFA and the RFP.
Just two.
San Diego Rescue Mission submitted, correct?
We received three. Sorry. We received three proposals, but one of those threes, the sponsor has since withdrawn. So the two that we would have would be the Interfaith proposal as well as the San Diego Rescue Mission.
Okay, got it. Yeah, because the item I appreciated about San Diego Rescue Mission is they are primarily funded from private sources, very successful, and then other very successful nonprofits like Solutions for Change, which are 100% privately funded, no government, you know, current government ongoing funding. They approach this dynamic as, help us out in the beginning, but within, you know, 36 months, we will be self-funding. We can raise our own money to continue to do what we're called to do in helping the homeless, which in the long term is more sustainable than a contractor that will year after year ask for money in taxpayer dollars to do something that a private vendor has the heart and the private funding to do. And so those are very important dynamics, and I understand that these nonprofits are not used to submitting government contracts like Interfaith is, and so I want to give them the opportunity to refine themselves and come before us and, and make those proposals that will save potentially millions of dollars in the long run by being self-sustaining and not dependent on tax dollars.
Ms. Ms. Larson, could we meet like the week before, like the Tuesday before for the workshop, if, if, if the motion to continue is, is successful? Because what I'm hearing is, any real wasted time is going to cost a lot of money, or I should say, delay in time.
So, mayor, traditionally, we schedule these on Wednesdays, however, subject to availability of the council members and making sure that nothing else is booked in the council chambers, that we could not rebook, you know, we could book it on another date as well. I, I was informed that we actually do already have a workshop scheduled on the 11th regarding sand. We may not want to tackle two very large topics on the same date, so I think having an alternate date is, is a good idea, if there's a date that the rest of the council would be available in early August.
August 3rd? August 3rd. Well, I'm still going to urge, I, I believe we do have to hear from the public. Yes, I'm, I'm seeing nods from our city attorney, so why don't we, before we vote on the motion, which is to continue, hear from the public?
Our first public comment is from John Seymour, to be followed by A.J. Galca-Gonu, to be followed by Ted Mihara. Mr. Seymour, you have three minutes.
I won't take that. Thank you, John Seymour from National Core. Greg is right, we for, apply for those Project Home Key monies, they're coming out, and if his organization is not teed up with your support, you will lose that opportunity. That would be a horrible thing. Those monies go by like that. The prop monies that the voters prove were all allocated and committed within two years, this Project Home Key money is going to be gone. Number two, you had a private, you had a professional NOFA released, you had two come in. I reviewed that, in my professional opinion, that San Diego Rescue Mission was good, but the IC one, the ICS one was much superior. Solutions for Change did not even submit. If anything tonight, I would urge you, and then it's up to the Board of Directors of the ICS, not Greg, volunteer Board of Directors, to move forward. If you approve him conditionally tonight, the board's going to have to take their own risk. Get moving, you'll have your workshop, and then whatever happens falls down, or goes forward. But if you don't give him the green light tonight, you're putting his project at risk. I promise you that. We've been there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from A.J. Galca-Gonu, to be followed by Ted Mihara, to be followed by Greg Angel. A.J., whenever you're ready, you're on.
Good evening. I'm Director of Public Support of Housing for Hope Through Housing Foundation. I personally worked on launching a navigation center, large-scale service centers in our county. I would definitely encourage you to support ICS's project. Within my almost 20 years of working with the homeless and housing, ICS has proven a track record of executing projects as directed, as promised. They provide best practices, evidence-based practices, holistic care, meaning a long menu of services to intervene and access while working with them. And they're truly effective for progressing people in their lives, to improve their lives. In addition, their volunteer workforce in the community in North County is unmatched. The community involvement is something that changes the dynamic of the project, or of any project like this. It becomes a community project, not just an ICS project. They do not impose programs or projects unless it's done with review of risks and strategies to make sure that they meet their metrics and deliverables. So please, tonight, fully support this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Ted Mihara, to be followed by Greg Angel. Mr. Mihara, you're on.
Good evening again. Echo everything that was just said, just to emphasize that time is of the essence for many of the projects. We have vulnerable folks out on the street, and type of shelter is critical to addressing the needs of the city.
Thank you. And our, our final public comment is from Greg Angel.
Your homeless outreach team worked with 601 unique individuals unsheltered in Oceanside last year in 2020. Your homeless outreach team moved 122 of them into shelter. 122 out of 601. If you would like to... out of 601. If you would like to delay, what we have offered to do, to create a first-in-class, trauma-informed, wraparound service center with services for mental health, for animal care, LGBT-friendly, building on what you are already investing in with your homeless outreach team, with your public housing authority, the creation of permanent supportive housing. If you'd like to delay that, you have the opportunity to do that. You also have the opportunity to conditionally approve and authorize your staff to begin negotiation. Anything that is agreed will come back to you for a review. If you'd like to have workshops with other providers and consider other options, I would invite you to do that simultaneously to completing, at least beginning, I should say, negotiations on what we have proposed. We are here to be your full partner. We have acted in good faith. We have put together the most robust submission as judged by the housing authority, with input from police, with input from community members. You've heard the call tonight from business leaders demanding that we address homelessness. You have the opportunity to do that tonight. We are here to work with you. I ask that you please authorize staff to begin negotiations, and I offer our commitment to work with you to design the end product in a way that meets your goals, improves our community, and helps our neighbors experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
concludes the public comment on this item.
Thank you. We have a motion to continue this item, and am I hearing it would be to August 3rd, 2 o'clock?
So Mayor, unfortunately, I learned that our new Housing and Neighborhood Services Director is not available on the 3rd. She's available on the 4th, any date after that, and I think it's going to be critical to have her here for that discussion and presentation. If you'd like, we can survey council to figure out what date would work best in early August, unless you want to go ahead and select another date at this time. June 30th, in two weeks?
Yeah.
Is everybody available?
Yes.
Are you here?
Okay, so there is a motion to continue this item into a workshop where we would be voting, and it would be to the 30th at 2 o'clock here in council chambers. Please vote for the continuance. It's a motion to continue.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Okay, next item. Our public comments on off-agenda items. Do we have public comments, Mr. Navarro?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is from Joe Hill, to be followed by Sandy Beal, to be followed by Mitch Silverstein. And we're getting Mrs. Beal on the line. Is she on? Oh, I mean, Joe Hill. Is Joe Hill on? And Joe, you are on.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Joe Hill, resident of Oceanside, 20 years. Councilmember Page, from 2000 to 2020, almost everything you have signed is in many forms of the Jensen name. But your federal bankruptcy case for 10 of those years assigned Corey J. Page. You told a reporter your legal name is Corey Jensen Page, and all but one of your voter registrations show Corey Jensen Page. Are you hiding something from us when you use the different names? Since you continue to rent 815 North Pacific, many District 1 voters wonder why you have told different reporters and this council that you lived there and wouldn't rent it out anymore. We have documented at least nine out-of-state cars parked for days in the driveway since your appointment. Also, we have documented reservations for this three-bedroom, two-bath unhosed rental from earlier this year, including now in June and again in this coming July. In 2010, bankruptcy documents you swore under oath at 815 Pacific is and will be a full-time vacation rental to fulfill your financial reorganization plan. You also told a court you are a real estate agent with a vacation rental background. So you must have known you were required to pay transit occupancy tax, right? Oceanside began collecting TOT from vacation rentals in 2007. Public records show you never paid TOT from 2010 through 17. When you did register your unhosed rental for TOT in 17, you only paid the first quarter. Then nothing was paid in 18 or 19. But in 20, despite COVID restrictions on vacation rentals, all four quarters were paid. Still no payment for 2021. After your appointment, you changed the rental status from unhosed to hosted. Per your attorney, I quote, "During rentals, Ms. Jensen has maintained all of her personal property in a segregated section of the house under terms that make them inaccessible to short-term rentals. Those nights when renters are in the house, she has stayed with her long-term boyfriend of 12 years, who lived in a small apartment two blocks away, also in District 1. Even if that statement were true, which it is not, it is still unhosed because you are required to be there as a host in a hosted unit." Councilmember Page, you still owe over $51,000 to the property tax collector. You now owe over eight years of TOT to the City of Oceanside. And have you paid your bankruptcy attorney yet? Per court documents, you failed to pay him $26,000 by October 2019, so he removed himself from your court case for non-payment. And is your attorney aware of the fact that you told the bankruptcy court in May of 2020 that your Carlsbad condo is now your primary residence? Voters want a council member with integrity that they can trust. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We can't find Sandy Beal in the Zoom, so we'll move on to Mitch Silverstein. And Mitch, whenever you're ready.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You could start.
Awesome. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Mitch Silverstein, and I'm the Chapter Manager for Surf Rider Foundation, San Diego County. On behalf of all of our members, supporters, and volunteers, and especially those who live in Oceanside, I'd like to make a comment regarding the Marine Debris Reduction Ordinance that the City Council chose not to pursue on March 17th. While we disagree with the council's decision to reject the ordinance and instead opt for a voluntary resolution, we admit that the ordinance was far from perfect and would therefore like to reframe our ask. Even if you had passed the ordinance, the easiest stipulation requiring food establishments to give out straws, utensils, and other condiments upon request only would not have taken effect until July 2023. This doesn't make sense because an upon-request-only stipulation, commonly referred to as a skip-the-stuff ordinance, is a very simple change and costs businesses nothing. It's not a ban. It only requires food vendors to stop giving their customers a bunch of extra items they don't need and did not even ask for in the first place. In fact, these skip-the-stuff ordinances actually save businesses money by reducing the needless distribution of single-use plastic items. Furthermore, our streets, beaches, and ocean will be cleaner due to a decrease, even if it's a modest one, in a particular set of single-use plastics that have a very high likelihood of becoming litter. And that's based on over 10 years of local beach cleanup data, which I'm very intimate with. Meanwhile, customers will simply need to ask for or serve themselves any accessories they need with their takeout. Hardly a big ask of Oceanside residents, and I'd venture to say that people will actually appreciate being given a little ownership over their consumption. So here's what we'd like you to consider, either tonight or at your August 4th meeting. We would like the mayor, deputy mayor, or any willing council member to make in second a motion to instruct city staff to either write a standalone skip-the-stuff ordinance or simply add the requirement to your current draft Marine Debris Resolution, thus making it a softer ordinance. Either way, the ordinance should have no more than a six-month phase-in. Our hope is that the entire council can get behind this because it's practical, it's easy, and it's good stewardship. It's not a ban. It will save businesses money, and it will reduce plastic pollution in Oceanside. Thank you so much for considering our request, and we will be back on August 4th in person to hopefully see it come to fruition. It's been a great honor to be a voice for our coast on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation, and I thank all of you for your time and service.
Thank you. We'll move to our in-person comments. Our first comments from Ken Layton, to be followed by Sandra Martinez.
Ken Layton, speaking only for myself. As our land values skyrocket, our business profile continues to tank. It's bad enough that Oceanside has the lowest jobs-to-housing ratio in the county, but what's worse is that we can't seem to do anything about it. And what's even worse than that is that the City of Oceanside has this unnatural, unhealthy alliance with the Chamber of Commerce, which perpetuates our economic swamp dwelling. Carlsbad has an interactive, thriving Chamber of Commerce with seminars and social activities that complements Carlsbad's arrival as a mecca for cutting-edge biotech startups with thousands of high-paying jobs. Carlsbad has over 300 information and communication technology companies like MaxLinear and NorTech. Carlsbad is home to Walmart Global Tech. Oceanside has four Walmarts. Carlsbad is home to Viastat. Oceanside settled for Sparsia Pharma, making Oceanside the leader in fentanyl production. With 128 life sciences companies, Carlsbad has reached a high-tech critical mass, while Oceanside has become a critical mess of huge distribution centers. The City of Oceanside actually boasted that Coke, FedEx, and Amazon are placing their huge warehouses here, bringing us a smattering of low-paying jobs, no sales tax, and a lot of high-impact trucks that tear up our roads. Corporate America wants to invent and manufacture cutting-edge products in Carlsbad. It wants to store stuff in Oceanside. And just who is doing the most to promote our reputation as barstow-by-the-sea? Well, it's the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. We never hear from the Chamber about how we should strive to upgrade our business profile. They just don't understand all that tech and job stuff. Instead, we hear from them when there's a hideous, high-density development like North River Farms, which was rejected 2 to 1 by the voters. The Chamber's head of its Board of Directors was the paid cheerleader for North River Farms. Then there's that so-called Prison Hotel condo tenement currently under construction on Oceanside Boulevard near I-5. If you're a developer who wants to build a trashy residential development, just donate to the Chamber, and they will help grease the wheels. Oceanside has the only local chamber that gets free rent in the city-owned property. When our Chamber then actively donates to politicians who vote to keep that Dravy train running, that's a huge corrupt conflict of interest. I guess I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comments from Sandra Martinez.
Hello, everybody. Great to be here. I'm Sandra Martinez, and I'm here today to share new information regarding the COVID-19 vaccine. Per FOIA response received last week, we now know with certainty there was no safety data submitted about reproductive or genetic toxicity. We also know with certainty that the spike protein is dangerous. These vaccines inject spike proteins and program the body to make them. Another FOIA request showed that the injected spike proteins travel to many tissues, including the brains, kidneys, and ovaries. This interferes with syncytin. That's a protein that is important and essential for proper placental development. Miscarriages are up over 2,000% in pregnant women who receive the vaccine. Those miscarriages are unusually horrendous, with an enormous amount of blood, and at times, the brains are ruptured of the lost child. On page 57 of the Pfizer study, it states that unvaccinated pregnant women should avoid being near vaccinated people for two weeks post-vaccination. It also states that pregnant women should not get vaccinated. Yet, these precautions are being ignored. Even prepubescent girls as young as 22 months have experienced vaginal bleeding after encounters with vaccinated persons. The vaccine appears to create uterine shedding in some individuals. Fertility clinics are reporting that sperm motility count is drastically reduced in men. This vaccine may lead to a huge percent of women, men, and children being sterilized. There are too many unknowns. The warning data and experiential data are very evident and support the likelihood of mass sterilization. Government experts deny the possibility. How can they say that when there's no safety data to support their claim, and the evidence shows otherwise? They also said no corners were cut in the vaccine trials, but there were no animal tests. That definitely is cutting corners. Censoring doctors and scientists is extensive and is keeping the public ill-informed. Discussion and critical inquiry are integral in science. Why are respected professionals being silent? Safety concerns for Oceanside residents warrant an independent investigation. In view of the absence of safety data, we must pause the local vaccine program until these questions are answered. The City of Oceanside should neither be promoting nor supporting a vaccine program where there is no reproductive or genetic safety data. It is likely to sterilize a large percent of women, men, and children in the community. Your job is to protect the public, even if it goes against the state. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment on off-agenda items.
Thank you. Next up is the item number 40, which is my request to make appointments to your motions from removal from some or all of the city's advisory groups. I have presented a recommendation, and I'm moving that forward. So I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. A motion to second, please vote.
Motion approved, 401, with Councilmember Rodriguez absent from the dais.
Thank you. Next item is item number 41. That's a request by Deputy Mayor Keim and Councilmember Weiss for direction to staff to coordinate with Sudbury Properties for the excavation and removal of sandy material from El Corazon to be placed on Oceanside beaches and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million from the beach sand funds towards the effort. Deputy Mayor Keim?
Thank you. I won't rehash our sand issues. I think our beaches are probably in the worst shape I've ever seen. Right now, Oceanside Boulevard and Buccaneer Beach have almost nothing left. It's tough to get emergency vehicles on and off, and I don't have much faith it'll be replenished this summertime through normal longshore transport. So this is merely the very beginning steps to be creative and look for sand in places we might not have before and see if there's anything we can do to supplement our beaches while we go forward with a long-term process to actually fix the problem. So again, we have to be creative. We have to think outside the box, see where we get sand, where we can put it, and make sure we have a beach in our city. So actually, if Mr. Koger, Public Works Director, is available, maybe you could just give us a quick briefing on how this might look or the next steps you would take with this request.
Well, I've already talked to a few people that know the El Corazon site pretty well, and I'm kind of getting some mixed reviews of what's there. A lot of the ground has been disturbed over the years because it used to be a mining site, and now we're, you know, doing a bunch of development up there. A few people do think there is some virgin ground in the southeast corner near Ardeo and Oceanside Boulevard, and so, you know, we could go and explore and see if there's some quality sand there. I've looked at some cost of what it would take, how many loads we could get to the beach. This would all have to be coordinated with tides and, you know, we'd have to have periods where we could haul to the beach and place it before, you know, the high tide comes back. And so it'll, it's going to take a big effort, but it's something we can start looking into. I haven't personally talked to the developer. Other staff has, and I know that he is willing to work with us in the effort and help, so that's encouraging.
Have we had an opportunity to have the sand analyzed to see if it would be the optimum kind of sand to be able to place on the beach?
No, ma'am. We haven't. We haven't taken it that far. With our SCOOP permit, the material that we place on the beach has to be at least 75% sand. So you can actually have some fines, clay and silt in it when you place it on the beach. Obviously, you want a larger grain sand, but we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
Councilmember Weiss, do you have anything to add? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and since, Kyle, you're still here. Yeah, and since Kyle, you're still here, I think that it's a great idea to start looking at putting sand on our beaches. I'd like actually go beyond just, because I'm assuming it's free sand from that site. The cost is the transportation, which is, what I understand, is the high cost, is the transportation, not the actual dirt. But if we could get sand from, say, a lagoon or Santa Margarita River that is rich in deposits, that probably would be good sand. I mean, other places, if staff could look into as part of this. You know, if the goal is to get sand on the beach, if we could find other deposits, I think that would be a great idea.
I concur. I think, again, we just need to think outside the box and do what we can as quickly as we can.
Okay, let's hear from the public. We've got, and then we'll have further discussion and potentially motion.
We have five speakers that wish to speak on this item. Our first public comment is from Steve Meschew, to be followed by Dirk Akuma, to be followed by Bob Ashton. Mr. Meschew, you are on.
Hi, Sanchez and council. Our beaches are in critical shape, so I encourage you to approve this emergency El Corazon Band-Aid. I know the public would like the best fluffy sand that you've got, but that type washed away very quickly. I encourage us to select the heaviest sand, coarsest sand we can get, and still the installed sand retention devices. It's very frustrating to see sand put on the beach till we... Staff should have provided you a chart following. I'd like to, in previous presentations to you, have described how our sand is continuing to go down the offshore canyons with no real natural replenishment. Also talked about the success of the groin fields that were built before the Coastal Commission in Newport Beach and in Ventura. Show you examples of the successful application of groins in other states, other places in the United States. All appear to be doing their job and have become favorite spots for search in those. In Hawaii, groins are used at the mouth of the Pearl Harbor, protecting almost a mile of beach. On Maui, there were seven rock groins built in 1944 that are now being rebuilt. On Rockaway Beach in Long Island, New York, there are 22 groins protecting over two miles of beach. Long Beach Island, New York, has nine miles of beach protected by 51 groins. Swan Pond in Connecticut has 15 groins protecting over two miles of beach. Ocean City, oh, famous, Miami Beach has three huge breakwater, about 50 feet long. These are hard structures, and each, they have a tough time keeping, maintained. Ocean City, New Jersey, has nine groins protecting five miles of beach. Cape May, New Jersey, would have been washed away decades ago, but this had two areas of groins, five near the town and 10 near the point. Upham Beach, Florida, has experimented with many groins and breakwater configurations over the past 20 years and has settled on this one. Groins work. On June 30th, we will hear the recommendations of the sand study. If retention devices are recommended, I hope the council will support their use. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Dirk Akuma, to be followed by Bob Ashton, to be followed by Sherry Mackin. Dirk, whenever you're ready.
Seb, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, City Council and Honorable Mayor. Dirk Akuma, 30-year resident and director of Save Oceanside Sand. I want to thank Councilman Keim and Councilman Weiss for advancing this agenda item. I think it's very important that the city look at funneling some critical funds to the sand effort. You know, there are a few things that we can do right now, and I think it's important that we have the money to do that and that staff be able to look at these alternatives. I'm really excited that staff is considering seizing some sand from El Corazon, which looks like to be a possible natural site for some sand. If we are able to find some sand, I would hope that the sand would find its way to Buccaneer Beach and then also to enrich the area by Tyson Street. I also agree with Councilman Keim's suggestion to look at the long-term results or long-term situation with sand and that we shift to a long game as far as our strategy and not just putting sand on the beach and watching it wash away. I think we really have to focus on retention and try to establish some sort of sustainable beach situation. Keeping that in mind, I would hope that some of the monies that the council is earmarking here could be used for the second phase, the sand study, which may include some environmental review and then coastal commission permitting, which is going to be very critical. Also, I think a great use of the million-dollar funds that you're considering would be to consider hiring a dedicated coastal zone administrator. Encinitas has a similar person that has been able to achieve remarkable results and bring a lot of federal funding and state funding in their way for their sand project. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Bob Ashton, to be followed by Sherry Mackin, to be followed by Nick Ritchie. Mr. Ashton, you are on.
Yeah, thanks, Seb. Good evening, Oceanside city leadership. Bob Ashton, resident since '62 and Save Oceanside Sand Board Member. First of all, a big thank you to Councilmembers Weiss and Ryan Keim for bringing this important issue of sand replenishment to a vote this evening. I highly encourage the council to unanimously approve the proposal. It's mentioned that this replenishment effort will be funded by the sand fund, which I understand is a set aside amount of about $600,000 annually. I think this fund is normally earmarked to fund additional dredge sand from the Harbor Channel dredging. I'd like the council to consider using this, similar to what Dirk said, to fund a new city position of Oceanside Coastal Zone Program Administrator, similar to the beneficial position that our coastal sister city of Encinita enjoys. As a beach city, Oceanside should prioritize adding a skilled expert on staff whose primary focus is the sustainment and improvement of our beaches and shoreline. This new position would also greatly enhance the city staff's ability in monitoring, planning, and executing shoreline improvements, both near-term, midterm, and most importantly, long-term. Please consider establishing this position soonest. I'd also like to address the condition of beach accesses south of Wisconsin Street. Many of the, I think it's 11 city beach access points south of Wisconsin require immediate and long-term attention to improve safe access to the beach and water. We're a beach town. Oceanside, you know, Oceanside must improve those areas. We see fantastic improvements happening by the pier. How about migrate those improvements south so that the rest of the city residents and visitors can enjoy the same safe access to entire coastline? Lastly, please stay the course regarding the sand study with the unanimous council vote to approve the soon-to-be-proposed solutions for sand replenishment and retention. The California Coastal Act, Section 30235, provides provisions for construction that alters natural shoreline processes shall be permitted when required to serve coastal-dependent uses or to protect existing structures or public beaches in danger from erosion and when designed to eliminate or mitigate adverse impacts on local shoreline sand supply. Be sure to hold the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers accountable in funding and executing the decided-upon solutions, and do not let the Coastal Commission say no. So in summary, thanks for the near-term sand solution with the Corazon sand or other sand. Focus on the long game and establish a City of Oceanside Coastal Zone Program Administrator. Hold the Army Corps accountable to restore beaches and team with the Coastal Commission to get to yes on the approved and of the soon-to-be-proposed replenishment retention solution for Oceanside beaches. I know I speak for a lot of Oceanside beachgoers and fellow watermen.
That's time, Bob.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Our next public comments from Sherry Mackin, to be followed by Nick Ritchie. Sherry, I believe you're on.
There we go. Had to unmute him. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Some history here is former deputy mayor of the city of Oceanside. I was Oceanside's representative on SandEG. I was also appointed to the Shoreline Preservation Committee, where we worked on and got approval for opportunity sand to be used on our beaches. The sand is held to certain standards, delivered to the beaches by developers or other parties, and Oceanside has benefited from this program on two occasions that I'm aware of. At one point, I understood that part of the hotel deal was that Malkin was to deliver the sand that he removed from his underground parking to our beaches. I have since heard that when that, quote, "deal" was renegotiated, the opportune sand piece was removed, and he sold the sand to someone else. Developer wins, residents lose. Now we have Sudbury in the picture, the developer of El Corazon, yet another half-bought deal. How is it a city that needs its beaches replenished annually must pay the developer of El Corazon $1 million to deliver sand to our beaches? Why in the world would the city set up a contract stating any sand excavated from El Corazon will be delivered on El Corazon? Why didn't you think to include beach sand deliver in that deal? Again, developer wins, residents lose. I believe the city has bent over backwards for the El Corazon developer. We are fronting the cost for the infrastructure of the arena, and heck, you've given him Park One parking for arena uses. It makes one wonder if it is because he has donated to Weiss, Keim, and Rodriguez political campaigns that they are willing to give him the million. Time to think about this, the taxpayer and the resident, and our needs. I wholeheartedly support using appropriate opportunity sand for our beaches and would hope that any more projects built in this city, especially along the coast, that you think sand. Make beach sand replenishment a requirement if they go underground at zero cost to the city. Any sand received should be placed on our beaches south of Oceanside Boulevard. The hotel has plenty of sand in front of it, so do visitors to the harbor, North Coast Village, and those north of the pier. They have had their share of sand replenishment. It's time to move south with sand. On a final note, let's work on those negotiating and contract skills. And I'm asking again that someone on this council work with Carlsbad and SandEG to dredge Carlsbad's hugely impacted lagoons and get that sand on our beaches for both the lagoons and Camp Pendleton. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public comment tonight is from Nick Ritchie. Nick, you're on.
Thanks, Seb. I'd like to thank once again the council, especially Keim and Weiss in looking at this issue. And I'm very encouraged by the sand study as it moves forward. We get that information on June 30th, and then you have the workshop on August 11. We all know this is a pressing issue, and we're pretty excited about the opportunity, and I truly believe one of the last opportunities to save our beaches. As the mayor had said, we need to be creative. We need to think outside the box as far as the sources of sand, and as you mentioned, Santa Margarita River, which happens to be one of the only two wild rivers left in the state of California, and it's on Camp Pendleton. And also Del Mar Beach. Anybody that's ever walked that beach, you have to stop in the middle of the beach and rest, otherwise you'll cardiac out. There's so much sand, it's phenomenal. We need to have somebody that would interact and interface with Camp Pendleton about the possibility of accessing that sand when we do get a comprehensive retention and replenishment program going. That is a sand resource. Also, that person, as has been spoken for by some of my colleagues, would be a beach director, a coastal director, somebody that is employed by the city to focus on and only on the retention and replenishment, the restoration, the preservation of the greatest resource we have in this city. And I would also like to encourage the council. In the last three decades, we've had two sand studies. They both came up with the recommendations, and those councils chose to do nothing other than allow those recommendations to slip off into the abyss. They made no choice about the future. So I would encourage you that when those recommendations come forward, to make choices that would once again ensure the restoration of our beaches and the success of Oceanside. Also, I would also like to encourage you to begin entertaining the notion that we need to take a significant amount of that money, of that $33 million from the federal government, and invest it in our beaches. This will ensure financial stability of Oceanside. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes the public comment on this item.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keim. Any other words or an or a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff.
To do all the things, yeah. Okay.
Correct.
Councilmember Weiss?
I would just like to comment briefly on a comment that Sherry Mackin had made. The city owns the El Corazon property. We just happen to have a development agreement with Sudbury to develop it. A number of years ago, we actually went out and tested the sand in that southeast corner. All, we're not giving the developer a million dollars. What I think the intent here is, is that we would get permission from Sudbury to remove the sand off our property and put it on the beach since we're in such desperate need. So I will second Deputy Mayor Keim's motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'll be really quick. From my understanding, staff's moving on as many opportunities with sand as possible. I know this has been talked about forever. We have the sands, we have the study coming. In the end, I would definitely support, I don't know if it's a bill that other cities have, but I would definitely support a sand broker that goes out and finds opportunities and is completely dedicated as a staff, city staff member, to focus on sand. I just don't know if it's something that we're missing out on opportunities because we don't have a committed staff member and we just kind of wait for it to fall in our lap. But, you know, we can go get sand from El Corazon, but it's like flushing it down the toilet. You know, that money is just going to get washed down to somebody else's coast, and it's not a permanent solution. It's abandoned, and I get that. So we'll get a little bit of use out of it, but we need a more consistent permanent solution, period. I'll support this item, but we need some more permanent solutions. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, it was my understanding that in the early 80s, we did get sand from El Corazon for the beaches, and the sand was viable. It was really good. I think the council spent $3 million on sand from El Corazon in the early 80s. But any little bit of sand on our beaches right now is going to help for the summer, even if it washes away. We need it. We need it now.
Right, so I have served on the shoreline, SandEG shoreline working group during both regional sand replenishment projects. And there were a lot of studies, so I think that we could probably, you know, it was 2000, right, in 2004, something like 2005, something like that. The whole idea was try to do it every five years. And there were some lessons learned from the first one to the second one. So the second one, the second time that sand was dumped on the coast stayed a little bit longer. I think it had to do with the size and also the quality. And so, and also, of course, there's a specific time that you can do this and to try to maintain the sand on the beach for as long as possible. So I think all of those studies are out there. I'm not sure that we need a full-time person to be serving as a broker. I think that there are constantly studies being done by the Scripps Institute of Oceanography and some other scientists. So I do support this. I think that it would be, I understand that our opportunistic permit needs to be reapplied for, I don't know how long that's going to take. But also to ensure that we do a proper study and get the best sand possible. Again, I think the major cost is in the distribution of the transport and distribution. It's not really in the sand. Did you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am. I was just going to say, our scoop permit did expire. We renewed it a couple of times. The agencies want us to come back and do a new, a whole new application. I've got our consultant...
I've got our consultant working on it. It could be six to 12 months before it's finished. Apparently, the agencies are taking a long time to review these, but we're working on it.
Six to 12 months to complete the process?
The permit, to get the permit.
Wow. All right. I have no other lights. Do you, do you understand what the motion is? Yes? Okay. There's a, there's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, item number 42, request by Deputy Mayor Keim and Councilmember Weiss to rename El Corazon Drive from Rancho de Oro Road to Senior Center Drive. Name after Dr. Hugh LaBounty. So it'd be Dr. Hugh LaBounty Drive. Is it Deputy Mayor Keim or Councilmember Weiss?
Councilmember Weiss.
So just a brief history. Dr. LaBounty had a passion for Oceanside and shared his time and talents with many members of the community and city staff. Importantly, he was the founding member of the Oceanside Economic Development Commission that helped jumpstart the economic revival of the downtown. Through his stewardship, the EDC created its first council-approved economic development strategy for the entire city. But his most significant city contribution was making the El Corazon property come alive for the community. In July 2003, he, along with nine other people, were appointed by the council to serve on the city's El Corazon Committee, which was tasked with developing a community plan for El Corazon that had previously been a sand mine. Hopefully, some of that sand will end up on our beach. The committee was comprised of 10 community members representing very diverse views, and he was selected by that membership to lead the committee through an extensive multi-year outreach and planning effort. The culmination of that endeavor was the creation of the master plan for El Corazon that included the extensive parklands, the area for community service, and other related development. Without that master plan and the community vision for the site, and I recognize there were many other people who were involved along the way in the various committees, but without his leadership, we would not have the senior center, the multi-use sports fields, the aquatic center trails, open space, and the pending arena. So I think it would be a tremendous honor to rename El Corazon Drive from Rancho de Oro Senior Center Drive for Dr. Hugh LaBounty. And as a note, the Economic Development Commission voted 7 to 0 with one abstention to support the renaming of the road to honor Dr. LaBounty. And I'll move approval of renaming the road in honor of Dr. LaBounty.
I'll second.
Okay, there is a motion in a second. I see no other lights. Do we have any comments? We do.
Yes, we do. We have two individuals that did sign up. One was Shelley Parker, but we can't find her in the Zoom. So we'll move on to our other public comments from Sherry Mackin.
Good evening. I've heard time and time again that although El Corazon is not dedicated or needed parkland, that due to the sporting activities at the El Corazon, those activities are protected, the use of parkland. Having said that, this suggestion to name something in our parks should go to the Parks and Recreation Commission. If this is truly a park, it should go to the Parks and Rec Commission. It shouldn't come at a council meeting with no backup information whatsoever attached to it other than any backup material will be presented later. There is policy in place, and I would ask that you follow the policy rather than push this through. Personally, I support naming streets and parks to create a sense of place for parks and recreation rather than someone who has passed. Please consider following current policy when it comes to parks and naming items in those parks. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
El Corazon is something that I have worked really, really hard on while I've been on the council. Even, even before I was on the council, I, I actually went around and listened to people who really were championing the El Corazon for a park. And those were folks that were at, who lived in Oceana real, I mean, I want to say, they just really, really took a leadership on this. When I got on the council, the first item that I put on the agenda was to do, well, actually, after Manchester, we finally walked away from Manchester, I should say. It was right after that because we actually were going to give away the El Corazon property to Manchester for a golf course. And actually, also in between there, it was Diane Nygaard who did a citizens initiative and went door to door to do a park at El Corazon. And I was one of the folks that went around and also made phone calls to try to get, well, first of all, she did all this effort to organize it and to get it on the ballot. It did get on the ballot, lost by something like 30 votes, but we all worked really, really hard for that purpose, to get it declared as, as parkland. For, for the senior center, I approached Jack Feller and said, "Let's together work to do a senior center at El Corazon." I had gone to a city manager. City manager said, you know, "We only have $8 million for capital improvement projects. If you, if this goes forward, then this is the only thing that we're going to be able to do." And I said, "This is very, very critical. The seniors need services." So we went forward. It was a council that voted 5-0. We did, after we lost by 30 votes, create a committee for, and each one of the council members were allowed to have three people on this commission. And Hugh LaBounty was appointed. I want to say that I really, I know that he, that he has contributed very much to the city of Oceanside with respect to economic development. I, I wondered about naming Mr. LaBounty after something that I don't think he had as much to do as, say, other things. The El Corazon Committee was made up of, it's a three by five, 15 people, 15 people. And each one contributed so much. It is difficult to single out one person for the El Corazon Senior Center, which then created such an interest in developing it. So, you know, I, I want to honor Mr. LaBounty. I just wonder if naming a street that is associated with a senior center is the best way of honoring him. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Who initiated this item? Is it, was it you, Councilmember Keim? Oh, you initiated this item. Okay.
Two people.
Very good. Well, it takes two, but just one gets it on it. Okay. You know, yes, we have policies and procedures and those sort of dynamics, but we also, you know, at our discretion, can move forward on creative dynamics like this. I have no problem supporting this item. And so, yeah, sounds good. Let's move it forward.
I have no other lights, and I just thought of the couple. It's the Bales, Dixie and Lou Bales, who were the ones that were really championing this. So let's vote.
Motion approved, 4-0 with Mayor Sanchez abstaining.
Item number 43 is adoption of two ordinances amending various sections of Chapter 13 and 37 of the Oceanside City Code pertaining to water services and solid waste and recycling services. It was introduced June 2nd, 2021, on a 5-0 vote. Is there a motion?
Move adoption.
Oh, I didn't need the title, mayor, if you don't mind.
There's a motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just accepting. Motion by Councilmember Weiss, second by Deputy Mayor Keim.
I'll go ahead. This are the adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 13, revising miscellaneous provisions in the solid waste and recycling ordinance, and an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, revising miscellaneous provisions in the water ordinance.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item number 44 is adoption of an ordinance amending Articles 4, 4A, 12, 13, and 36 of zoning ordinance ZA 21-00002 and Chapter 7, Article 13 of the Oceanside City Code to remove the medical-only restriction on all cannabis-related facilities that the city currently allows. Introduced June 2nd on a 4 to 1 vote. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilmember Weiss for adoption. Oh, there are speakers.
Yep. We have, we have seven speakers, and some of them are not in the room. So we're going to try to get them. Gracie Morgan is not in the room, correct?
Okay, and the second was by Deputy Mayor Keim, is that right? Okay. So we have the motion, and we'll listen to the public.
Becky Rapp will go to Becky Rapp, to be followed by Carol Green, to be followed by Judy String. And you're on.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a mother and a youth group mentor deeply concerned for the safety and welfare of this community. The community is struggling.
And it looks like Mrs. Rapp hung up. So we'll move on to the next speaker, which is Carol Green, to be followed by Judy String, to be followed by Peggy Walker. And we have Carol Green on the line.
Yes, you do.
All right, perfect. You may start.
Thank you very much. I would like to speak against the adoption of this ordinance for several reasons. The first reason is that this is still detrimental to our youth. And the city council's most, highest goal is to make sure that it protects the citizens' health and safety. Secondly, I would like to say that there are not enough protections in place, although the city has said previously that there would be protections in place because of the permitting process and that the BCC has protections. According to the BCC, there are no compliance checks to make sure that underage folks are, are not accessing this. And they are also, boy, it's hard. I wish anybody would pay attention. It's just so hard when you've had such a horrific experience, and it seems that it's just so pro forma that this is just going to go through. But these places are commercializing, and they're preying on our children, including my own family and my own child, and many people that have experienced psychosis and other issues from addiction. I urge you to not adopt this ordinance.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Judy String, to be followed by Peggy Walker, to be followed by Suzanne Hume. And Judy, you are on.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council. Thank you for your service. It does not go unnoticed by me that it's very late and that you've listened to some very complex issues this evening. I too am speaking against this ordinance. I think we were sold a bill of goods that all people were interested in was marijuana as medicine, that it was just a foot in the door to move to where you're considering tonight, and I oppose this. I think that this guise of marijuana for marijuana as medicine was a first step that would give the industry a far greater impact if it moved into recreational. And what I'd like to suggest to you that is the problem with recreational marijuana is that it extends the footprint of a predatory business. And the impact of that is that they're far more visible in our community. And that physicality is what influences youth, to think that it's more normal. And it builds more customers, and that's what the industry is all about. It's built on a business plan to increase the number of customers, and that's done by attracting a youth base that will stay with them. So again, I'd like to register my opposition as a mother and a grandmother. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Peggy Walker, to be followed by Suzanne Hume, to be followed by Kathleen Lippett, to be followed by Becky Rapp. And Peggy, you're on. Peggy, if you can mute yourself. We'll go back to you, and we'll move on to Suzanne Hume. Suzanne, you're on.
Oh, great. Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Suzanne Hume, and I am the educational director and founder of Clean Earth for Kids. We're here tonight to oppose the expansion of cannabis in Oceanside. This comment is not about medical cannabis. The comment is about the concern about the expansion of current cannabis regulations and concerns about the cannabis impacts, well, the impacts of cannabis and cannabis smoke on pregnant women and children and the public and people with pre-existing conditions, asthma, and COPD. So we need a clear plan of what the city is going to do to help keep cannabis out of the hands of youth and to educate people about the harms of cannabis and secondhand smoke. Both cannabis smoke and Delta-9 THC are known health hazards listed under Prop 65 and a carcinogen since 2009 and 2020. Secondhand smoke from cannabis has many of the same chemicals as tobacco smoke and those link to lung cancer. Cannabis smoke can cause birth defects and reproductive problems and increase the risk of cancer. THC and other chemicals during pregnancy can cause reduced birth weight, behavior problems, and impaired learning abilities. So this is so important, and thank you for listening. We spoke about this last week, and we know it's late. We appreciate you, but we're really, really concerned about this. When we talk about reduced birth weight and behavior problems and impaired learning abilities, this is really important. And since THC products are marketed at youth, especially youth of color, this is a racial justice issue, a social justice issue, an environmental issue, and a public health and safety issue as well. So thank you again so much for listening. We, everyone has the right to a smoke-free environment. And I know in Carlsbad, they're working on something about this right now and with housing. Very, very important. So we would urge you to vote no on this expansion. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We'll move back to Peggy Walker, see if she's still there. Peggy, if you're there, please unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, you're on.
Good. Thank you. I wanted to applaud Mayor Sanchez for listening to youth at the last meeting. Those youths who said that recreational use will make marijuana products more available to underage users. My job is data research and analysis, and data show these kids are right. Kids do not buy from permitted retail outlets. Ask anyone under 21. They buy black market recreational marijuana online through social media and from illicit dealers who may be peers or adults. This thriving underground for kids refutes the industry proclamations that permitted businesses are the only way to prohibit access to young people or to combat the black market. In fact, data show permitted businesses give those illicit dealers easier cover and fuel the black market. Data from both pro and con marijuana sites show that of the 14 million pounds of marijuana grown in California yearly, only about 20% is sold legally. A great deal of the state's 80% oversupply is sold to the black market. In the plaque, in the past six years, while legitimate sales rose, illegal sales rose with them. The FBI says the cartel problem and associated black market have been accelerated by the open border. I oppose this move to recreational, but if you move forward, with the numbers on oversup, oversupply so clear, Oceanside's job will be to make sure that law enforcement and regulation contain the unrelenting criminal network that has no problem moving black market products. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We can't find Kathleen Lippett in the Zoom, so we'll end it with Becky Rapp. And we're getting Becky on. And we're getting Becky on the line.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a parent and a youth group mentor here to raise concerns regarding the potential amendments to the municipal code. My primary concern is the negative impact some of these amendments will have on young people. Changing medicinal marijuana dispensaries to add recreation sends a clear message that the city feels marijuana is safe for all to use, regardless if they have a medical condition. When a city permits recreational pot, teens and young adults trust that it's a safe product and have a much higher likelihood of using it. When I ask my teens as they, if they think it's safe to use, they say that the city wouldn't call it recreational if it wasn't safe. This is not the message you want to send to Oceanside teens and youth. In past years, the city has been clear about their goals and has set a high bar to create smoke and alcohol-free parks and neighborhoods. By changing municipal code, you will be directly contradicting past goals and messages sent to residents. Not all cities are embracing medipot or recreational marijuana. In the staff presentation on June 2nd, only two cities were listed as having bans on marijuana businesses. I would like to be clear that there are many more cities in our county who continue to hold, hold strong bans. San Marcos, Escondido, Solana Beach, Oklahoma, and Poway, just to name a few. In fact, 80% of the states still bans the sale of marijuana. I ask you to uphold the current municipal code, which is medipot only, and send the message that you will continue to uphold prior goals and priorities. Thank you.
We did have an individual that was registered to speak in the Zoom. She is now back in the Zoom. That's Gracie Morgan.
Is that the person?
Gracie, are you there? We were going to get you on. All right, you're on. Gracie, you need to unmute yourself. Gracie, Gracie, you need to unmute yourself. Can we send her an unmute request? Yeah.
You, we can't hear you.
Gracie, we can't hear you. You need to, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay. All right, we do have a mo, is that, is that done? Is that over?
Yeah, that, that is.
Okay. We do have another request, a request to Councilmember Rodriguez.
I just think it's appropriate to acknowledge the callers that waited this late on this item. This council is committed to combating the black market and ensuring that Oceanside youths do not have access. So we just, I just wanted to echo that. We're going to really fight hard to make sure. Thank you.
There is a motion in a second. Please vote.
I need to title, sorry. This is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Oceanside, California, amending Oceanside zoning ordinance, Articles 4, 4A, 12, 13, and 36, and Chapter 7 of the Oceanside City Code by the amendment of Article 13 regarding cannabis facilities.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
General council member comments? I guess we'll be back for one more meeting before we are out. I don't see any lights, just real quick. Main Street Oceanside has Makers Market this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then the grand reopening of the Sunset Market will be on June 24th. So that's really exciting. We also have this Saturday, we have Juneteenth, along with Makers Market, so that's also 10 to 5, and that's again down, down here in the Civic Center. I want to say happy Father's Day, also happy graduation to all, all the graduates and their families. The city's birthday is July 3rd with the fireworks. It's going to be 133 years old, our city of Oceanside. And then happy Fourth of July, on the Fourth of July, happy birthday to our country. So, meeting adjourned to June 30th, 2:00 p.m. for council workshop on Item 34 that has been continued to this workshop. Thank you.